All this meeting to order, please rise for the Pleniplegalities.
I think so.
Pleniplegalities to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss.
Present.
Pipia.
Graham.
Present.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Present.
Throm.
Barnes.
Present.
We have corn.
All right. The first item is approval of minutes. They're on pages two to eight. I just have a few typos, double periods, and one misspelling, but otherwise I didn't have anything. Did you guys have anything?
Yes, I did.
Okay, what page?
On page two of seven.
Okay.
And maybe this was one of yours, under Planning Commission update.
Okay.
The last line of the paragraph, I think we could just put a period after counsel, and then we would get rid of a misspelled word.
That pursue it? Okay. Alex was informed to bring it to council. Okay.
And then...
So we'll put a period after counsel. Did you guys get that? And what else?
And on page four of seven, very last line on the page, Ninth Street Cliff. And then going...
Wait, wait, you wanted to say Ninth Street Cliff?
Cliff, that's what I brought up. And then on the next page, let's see, Mayor Grun reported that the Ninth Street Wall was a WPA project.
Where we at?
Because the cliff is the natural cliff. The next page.
You have Mayor Grun reported it was a WPA project.
The Ninth Street Wall, probably ought to identify what we're talking about.
It is reported that the Ninth Street Wall?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you want?
Yes. And then on page five of seven, down, second paragraph from the end, volunteers, if we could change maybe ladies to women.
Wait, 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 wait. Oh, and a few other ladies, you want women?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the next line at the end where it says she, that's referring to Mayor Grun and not me, so it should say Mayor Grun.
Okay, Mayor Grun, ask.
And then I have a lengthy change.
Okay, where's it at?
And this is underwater and wastewater, number one stormwater information.
Water, okay.
And I've typed it out, but I will read it.
Instead of the, you put a whole new paragraph in instead of that paragraph?
Yes.
Okay, let me hear it.
CM Boss stated that downtown businesses were given incorrect information by an individual that the city was proposing a stormwater fee or tax. She clarified that that information was not true.
You mean, is that CM Boss clarified?
Mm-hmm.
She, CM Boss clarified. Can we change that to CM Boss?
That's fine.
Okay.
CM Boss stated that the members of the Ad Hoc Committee to Study Stormwater Issues are Kevin Cromie and Karen Hughes, planning and zoning, Darling Boss and Gina Graham, City Council, and Mayor Carla Grun. One meeting has been held to begin discussion of this issue. CC Price was asked...
Wait a second, did we discuss all that at the meeting? Did we say that? These are supposed to represent what we talked about. Did we say?
I think so. Did we? Gina, since you're on the committee.
Did we actually stipulate who was on the committee during the meeting?
Or can we, if we're, can we review it? And if not, put it in brackets?
You're supposed, these are supposed to be exactly what's said at the meeting.
It's supposed to reflect what's said, not giving additional information that was not said at the meeting. That's what I'm trying to clarify. I'm not sure we talked about, we only held one meeting, who was on the Ad Hoc Committee? I don't think we...
I did say that, there was only one meeting.
One meeting, I know that was stated.
Okay.
But I don't know who was, if it was stated who was all on that committee, but I know who stated it was one.
Well, maybe we better scrap that, since none of us can recall for sure. And...
So where are we at in your change?
One meeting has been held to begin discussion of this issue.
So did CM Boss state that, put CM Boss stated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, go ahead.
And CC Price was asked to research comparable cities about their policies.
And that was also mentioned, Darling, that was also mentioned at the meeting? Okay.
And then the last two lines, just as they are.
Okay, did everyone follow that change, that amendment? And are you okay with it, after we amended her amendment? And you have it finalized for Debbie?
Yes, yes.
So I would entertain a motion to approve as amended the minutes from the May 14 meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh, all right. The next item is public comments. Anyone that is not on the agenda is welcome to come to the podium and give your name, your address, your ward, and you may speak up to five minutes. All right, we will move along to business and discussion items. Joe Coheurst, you're up first.
Thanks very much for your time, and I'd like to compliment the council for getting that big whiner out of the way right away. And just before I say anything, scuttlebutt on the street I heard this morning, which was a pretty nice thing, was about what a great job Dennis Basin was doing and how hard he'd been working on that speaker system and for everything in town.
So thank you, Dennis Basin.
Not that I'm the one person that would drop names or anything, but one of them's initials was Sue Roland.
Yeah, well, it's nice when we have a volunteer with that special.
But he's been working, and she was commenting, and there's some other people commenting, and I would like to thank him.
Well, thanks for noting that.
And of course, Mayor, for permission to get the beer garden for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday for this weekend, and then for September for the Boss Nationals.
And we didn't have any problems last year, did we, Joe?
We never had problems.
We've never had any problems. And now, do you have a license now that, I know you have?
Yes.
A carry license?
Yeah, I have a carry.
So they can carry out an unopened beer from your beer garden?
Sure.
Can they carry an open beer out of your beer garden?
Well, that's a city thing, the street.
Because the street is open, okay.
Yeah, well, I guess, that's nothing to do with me, I mean, you know, I, you know, that's...
Well, you just have both licenses now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys have any questions for Joe? I would entertain a motion to approve his beer garden for both these events.
Who's to approve the beer garden for both events?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much, and I only have one other thing. A year ago, I came in here and I mentioned exploring the idea of all year round, like on nice nights, of setting up a row of tables in front and being able to serve, you know, people come down, have a cold one, or like there's pizza being delivered, or things like that. And you were, you know, going to explore it and that, and the first I heard was that you talked to, it wasn't necessarily legal, and be on Main Street side, and I was wanting to know and get anything started on that. I mean, you look at this town, and if it wasn't for the Landl Corporation, something belly up, you know, as long as 10 years ago, we had 100 kids, we had 57 this year, and it looks like a ghost town, and dragon mane, everything's legal, but people don't know that, they're programmed not to come downtown, and I just, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but I was just thinking like this, in that little area alone. We got, well, Tories where they moved in, we've got the Chinese place, we've got the wagon wheel, and we got the Mexican food place right up there. And, you know, if we could just get people programmed just to come down a little bit and see what's going on, and, you know, and I like to go out and sit outside sometimes and just listen to the ball games, or the, or just the night sounds of that and see who's around there. I mean, I know it's not an answer, but we've got to do something. Landl Corporation can go up this town and be a ghost town, it already looks like a ghost town at night. Now, I know we're not going to get like we did in high school, where everybody's dragon mane and eating things like that, and I don't expect anything like that, but I just think we ought to try something, do a little part to get a little bit this, get a little bit motivated. We don't even have a grocery store. We're biggest town, St. Joe to Denver, and we don't have a grocery store unless you call that glorified 7-Eleven out there a grocery store, I don't.
Well, so you came last year to council and brought that you wanted to have a beer garden throughout the summer?
Well, just, just not a beer garden, but just a, like I said, a row of tables or something, a little area out front on a nice, you know, like a nice night, the ball games, and you've got this beautiful speaker system, you know, Marysville could do, like, if you go to, say, Wilbur, they're, they've got their speaker systems, they're playing up, they're playing check music and that, because of check capital and all that, but they can, they also use it for self-advertising for the city, you know, you could run loops of some kind of music or whatever you want, and things like that.
Have you talked to Michelle Weitzel about coordinating?
I haven't talked to anybody, I didn't, I didn't talk to anybody at all about this, this is just...
Craig, you know anything about how, if, you know, we have, we give him the right to have a beer garden for certain days, do you know the legalities of having them intermittent throughout the summer?
Well, it's like, if Landl Corporation, they've got the little area in the back, and like Sonic's got a little outside seating area in there, and we've got seating area right there by the, by the horse. Now, I'm not suggesting open up the whole town or anything like that, I'm just saying, why don't we utilize, we go to, Bobby's going to have an antique store, and why don't we utilize the area we got just on a night? I like to sit outside and holler at them once in a while, you know, it's just...
In a lot of cities, like, I mean, Lawrence and places, they have sidewalk kind of seating areas in front of restaurants and things.
Cafes, and, you know, you go to Colorado and Durango, they have them, and...
But I think the key thing, I wish the chief was here tonight, but I think the key thing is that even when we first established this, you had to have it limited, you had to have a fence around it.
And, and that's entirely reasonable. But, I mean, I don't know what, I don't know what to have or anything, I'd just like to get it started and do something, you know, I thought little things could do, like, the night, have people, they wanted, they could bring their grills down and do a little barbecue, and, you know, one time we had a tailgate party in there, and, you know, you don't need the street or anything in there. I have no problem at all with if it, if it needs a fence in a little area or whatever, you know.
Well, why don't you talk to Michelle after the barbecue weekend and see what she thinks about coordinating some of those over the summer? I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, you know, it's just, you know, I like listening, you can hear the ball games sometimes from the park in there, or just sounds of the town, like walk parties.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for the...
Thanks, Joe.
Bye, Joe.
All right. Sharon Kessinger is here tonight, or is Ralph going to talk? You're going to come and ask for something, who's going to do the asking?
I'm Ralph Cumber, Chairman of the Kestner Advisory Board. And we have had a meeting on, apparently, May 1st, and the real purpose of the meeting was to ask the city to approve fundraising for the Kestner Block Wall, so we could begin starting on, on the Kestner Block Wall, repairing the wall around the half of the block, the east half of the block, and to start fundraising for that wall. And we got involved with a contractor to try to determine what cost would be for the wall, and he suggested that we do some test panels to determine what the cost would be, how, what would be the best way to repair the wall and that kind of thing. And so we thought that would be a good project to get involved in. We also were considering, and we made the possibility of the city applying for a grant for the wall. But in our meeting, we determined that was not very likely, couldn't happen at this time around anyway, so we're not pursuing that very far, but keeping that in mind for future.
Well, I think Austin noted that, that we have that one open at the Kestner House Restaurant, so you can apply for another one.
Right.
While we have one Heritage Trust Fund Grant open, so, until, we couldn't apply for it until we get that finished.
That's right. So we did discuss the grant application, and right now, we're primarily interested in permission to go ahead with fundraising of the wall, of hiring a contractor to do test panels on the wall, to determine what the actual cost is going to be.
I think that's a good start.
And did we have another question about the contractor? About if we could hire contractors to do the work?
And that would be the foundation, if we pay the foundation for the test panel, and be fundraising.
So you just want, right now, you're asking for authorization to do the test panel for restoration of the perimeter wall and to continue fundraising for the project? That's what you're asking for?
Yes, in the future, where it's a thing that might really work.
Okay.
Go ahead with fundraising, or not, well, fundraising, yes, and, and application for the grant in the future, where we might get some, some good results from that.
Okay, so do you want to, would someone like to make that motion first, to approve the test panel for them to determine the cost of the brick repair, and for the Kestner House Foundation to continue with fundraising for that restoration?
And to be paid by the fundraising.
Restoration, fundraising by the Kestner House Foundation.
The test panels that we're talking about, hiring the contractor to do, would be paid for by the foundation, yes.
I shall move.
I second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six oh. And what else would you like, Ralph?
Some time ago, I had a discussion with the city administrator concerning the coal shed, brick building. I assume that you've all seen this building. The, before we did the, the brickwork on this building, we redid the whole south wall, basically, but there are holes in the floor, the upper floor. In this area, there are holes in the floor adjacent to this wall, they'd been, they laid down boards, rubble over that, and I, I asked about having the city repair that in, in this area, put in new boards, not new, but whatever, it doesn't really take anything serious, it's like, maybe buy some wood that doesn't rot away very easily, like cypress or something like that, and replace the old floorboards that are rotted out here, and in front of this arch. And this, this arch has a metal tin roof, and the tin roof is bent and rotted away, it's rusted badly, and I propose that the city replace that.
Now, what kind of tin do you need that?
Well, it's just a, it's an old-fashioned tin roof, it's a soldered system, it's, panels are laid down, and the seams are bent down, and they solder it.
And you think we can find that?
I think you can still find that, if you can, but we'll, we'll try to recommend a system that would work, according to the Historical Society.
Okay, so a tin roof similar to what you have now, and to replace the wood underneath?
That would be preferable, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to proceed with that, for the city to do that?
Now, I was just wondering, has anybody studied about what this is going to cost?
Well, the wood shouldn't be real expensive. It's just wood, right?
Yes, and not, not a lot of it either.
And the tin, you have an idea of how much the tin would cost?
No, I don't know. I, I, I did have a source I could, I could find out from, but I don't know what it called.
It could get a little hairy if it's special.
What's that?
It could get a little hairy doing it, if it's special, and it's going to, all of a sudden, it's going to cost a lot of money to get this special tin.
Well, it's a, it's a very old system, they've used it...
Right.
For a long, long time, and if we can't find a tin system that would work efficiently, we could, we could use another system, I'm sure, but we'd have to, it's basically with the Historical Society to find out for sure what would work.
So you have a ballpark of what that would cost, Ralph?
No, I, I don't want to give you a ballpark now.
So how do you guys want to proceed?
I think we need to look into the cost.
So you want...
I think we need to look into the cost before we commit to anything.
Okay. So we'll have staff, city staff will do that? City staff work with, work with Ralph?
Yeah.
To find the proffered tin, to find out approximately what it's going to cost? Is that how you guys want to proceed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that a consensus? Okay, Ralph, you got one out of two. This one, so, when the, will you work with Debbie and Austin and get a tin that you, will work, and so we have a price, and then bring it back to, or they can bring it back to council. Do you guys need him to come back once we have a dollar amount? We can proceed with that, okay. So we won't make you come back?
Okay.
But we'll just need a dollar amount. Fair enough.
Either a price for the tin, or a price for some substitute.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's right.
Consensus to find cost. All right. All right. Now we're on Policy 882. This is our third copy to review, and it was drafted. Did anybody have any problems with the policy as presented?
I just don't like how on the emergency shut offs, it still says will, and it says no wiggle room, I mean, depending on what the emergency is, and how much time you have until you have to shut the water off, I just, I mean, on non-emergency, I can completely see that, but if you've got an emergency situation, I mean, you're going to do the best you can to notify everybody, but, I mean, sometimes that's going to be impossible. I think if you, if you, if you set up a policy that's so strict that, I think sometimes you're setting yourself up for failure a little bit, if you box yourself in completely.
Well, I think the first one is just one phone call, right? One phone call to city hall personnel.
Well, to everybody, well, to the personnel, and they're going to try and, but does that mean that they're not going to...
And then city hall staff.
Does that mean, and they can't shut the water off until all these people get notified?
No, it doesn't say that. It just says...
So you're going to shut it off, and then notify them after it's shut off?
Well, it's better than not notifying them at all. Explaining the situation to them, the whole point is communication. If it's truly an emergency, you're right, we don't want to take time to go and make phone calls or go knock on doors, but we want to communicate to them as fast as possible. So right here, all they're doing is making one phone call to city hall personnel.
I just think, I mean, it depends on how big of an area is getting shut off, but I just, I think you need...
As soon as possible?
Well, a policy is stating the, the best, the best.
That you want to do.
And maybe sometimes you can't adhere to it to the latter.
What we desire them to do.
It's what we desire.
I just say you've got to realize that sometimes it's, it's not going to be possible, where you're going to be, you're going to be calling them up after the water's already shut off, and then you're kind of defeating all the purpose of, because they're going to figure it out when they go to use their water and it's not on.
I know, but at least we're making that...
I mean, it might be helpful to get a call so they have an idea, maybe when the water's going to be turned back on.
But we're making...
Unless it's an emergency shut off, they aren't going to know necessarily when the water is going to get turned back on necessarily.
But we're letting them know it's a city deal, it's a city problem, and we're addressing it. I think that's a cool thing, is to let them know, you know, it's an emergency, it's a city is addressing it, and this, and I think it's better than what happened last time. What happened last time, nobody was communicated about anything, and businesses...
There were mistakes that were made.
Yes, so we're trying to get a policy in place, so everyone knows what we expect the personnel to do.
So if they're unable to get a hold of affected residents and businesses, and we just tried, I mean...
Yeah, I mean...
Then it'll be posted on the web, and you can go look at it, look at it later.
Yeah, I mean, it's just to get information out there, we're just trying, we're an information world, so...
At least you know it's not your house, it's your house, it's other people's.
Yeah, it shows that you're not isolated, and that you need to call a plumber, it shows that it's a city issue, and they're taking care of it. I would entertain a motion to accept Policy 882?
I make a motion that we accept Policy 882.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, five one. All right. The next item business is disc golf, and the Rec Committee went and looked at the city hall, of course, as they had it laid out, and Terry Hughes had this information, and so I wanted to put it in so that you guys could read the research that he found. Did anybody else have any research that they want to share regarding disc golf?
No, just, I mean, I did some research online, and I...
Take this role out.
I will say this, I posted on Facebook and asked people, friends and stuff that I know, and I got nothing but positive comments about disc golf.
Well, I don't think anybody, I don't think...
They didn't think it was a fantastic idea.
I don't think anybody is against disc golf. I think, if you read this, what was the cornerstone of both of these, these articles? What was the main thing that they were trying to communicate? Safety. It was safety. Is it safe, and where to have a course? So it was safety, it says, you know, where you're supposed to have them, where you're not, lots of available space, where golf won't conflict with other park activities, large parks with relatively little traffic, they should not be installed in mixed area with frequent traffic. I mean, so this was one blog, so then I went to the PDGA, Professional Disc Golf Association, and they recommended 1.5 acres per hole. And our city park is only five acres.
It's the biggest park we have.
Well, no, we have other bigger parks, but you don't take something, and, so if they recommend 15 acres for nine holes, and we squeeze it into five, don't you think they know more than we do? And ours is a mixed-use park.
It is, but when we walked that, most of the areas where they're going to have the baskets, were honestly, a lot, not all of them, but a lot of them were areas that were already mowing, and they're not utilized. I mean, nobody's using a lot of those areas. Didn't go over the playground area.
But the disc goes way over, I mean, it's not like they're going to go straight, so this is what it's, so I looked at they, and the PDGA said it's not to be in a mixed-use area. You guys told me to go look at all these other parks, so I went to Warner Park, Warner Park is 160 acres, I think, and it's isolated, it's just like they said, an open area. Then I went to Wamego Park. Theirs is at, all it is is a disc golf course, that's all that it is, at Pennyland Park. Then you said, oh, oh, you need to go to Chautauqua. So Darling and I drove up to Chautauqua, it's 66 acres. Their city park is 66 acres. It makes sense that they have a disc golf course on 60.
And it's around, it's around the perimeter. The only time it's close to a playground or...
The campers.
Campers.
It's on the other side of some trees.
You, you, you have the tee box, you have your back to, to that playground or that area, so you're throwing away, not into, but it was the perimeter of this huge park. And then I talked with, with my son, Mike, who's played a lot of, well, he's a good golfer, was until the rocking 13 miles, and it kind of took its toll, but he plays disc golf, and, and his son, and I talked to a nephew, and I talked to some other people, they all say, the parks are always in a separate area. They're, and when I was telling my son Mike about it, and he said, well, how many holes are they planning to put in? Two, three? I said, no, nine. He said, there is not enough room. And, and the people that are good at it can throw a long distance.
I, I think a lot of the recommendations are kind of accepting trade-offs, or they, I mean, what you get here is visibility and more use because of its visibility and use, whereas if you put it in some isolated location like Lakeview, I mean, unless you had a bunch of sign...
Lakeview is not an isolated location.
But just because you live by it, you're...
Lakeview has thousands of kids come through it.
Compared to the city park, no, yeah, but they come through it for baseball games.
But it's a sports area.
It's not a general purpose park.
Lakeview is going to be kind of a boring place for a, I mean, it's mostly just wide open.
And that's, I talked to several people...
It'd be like playing, it'd be like playing golf in, on a football field, I mean, it's just no...
I talked to several people involved with the disc golf tournaments down in Emporia and the ones in Lawrence, and then kind of described what we were considering for a layout of courts, and they said, oh, that'd be great, because you'd get high visibility
And they said, oh, that'd be great because you'd get high visibility for the sport, people could readily access it, you could walk to it. That's one of the many problems I have with Lakeview is it's not a very easy to access place unless you're driving there, and turns out most kids don't drive.
Well, if I had... If our city park was 66 acres, I'd say it was a great location. But it's five.
Our total park is five?
Five acres.
Including the garden area? Including the trail itself?
I didn't include the garden area.
That has to be more than five acres.
I just picked up the number acres, park listed on the park association... Or park, you know, when you go through parks, and it lists in Marysville City Park and it said five acres.
That probably includes the pool.
It does include the pool. And it includes the tennis courts, which you can't use.
I cannot include... I would just include the trail and garden areas, though.
Well, even if you swapped out...
Because that's like multiple city blocks.
If you swapped out the pool and the tennis courts for that area, you're still at five.
But see, I'm on Jason's page with there's parts of the park that aren't being used. I mean...
Most... I mean, there's a couple that go down, and the one that crosses a road concerns me a little bit, maybe.
A little bit? You have a hole... You have people throwing a frisbee or a disc across the street and it only concerns you a little bit? I have articles where people lost their eyes, they had stitches, they got hit in the head, and...
That could happen at a baseball game.
I was going to say, if you want, I'll go find that about bicycling. I'll go find that about nerf.
There's a tennis court down there, somebody could bean somebody that was in a tennis ball.
But then they sued the cities.
Yeah, but see, the cities...
That these weren't in.
Okay, Craig, I'm not going to speak out of school. Aren't there a certain set of protections that cities have statutorily against this sort of thing in city parks unless there's like a specific hazard?
Without having researched this specifically, I mean, there might be the Torque Claims Act that apply to injuries on city property in the normal course, but, I mean, that's what I would want to look at is...
One park said that they lost 100 trees because of frisbee golf. So you want to put trees downtown and these other...
How did they lose the trees because of frisbee golf?
Because they were hit with the frisbees. They took out...
How hard are they hitting the trees with frisbees?
Were they hatchet frisbees?
Okay, I did my research. It's not I made this up.
Here's the deal, what I'm saying is, I can use the internet to make any point in the universe. What I'm saying is, we need to enter into a lot of common sense and firsthand stuff in Kansas.
That's exactly why I went to the Professional Disc Golf Association to see what they recommend. And they recommend one and a half acres. And what you're doing is, you're trying to take something and squeeze it into an area that it's not meant to be squeezed into.
Did you feel like it was squeezed in, honestly, when we walked it?
Yes, yes.
Pretty good area, yeah.
Yes, I did.
And I was really disappointed that Kyle did not bring a disc for everybody to play. And that's one of the... In this, some of this literature suggests that people consider it that they, you know, throw the disc to the whatever holes are proposed.
I think too... So in '08, we put the disc golf one up at Lakeview, just 10 years ago.
What kind of action did it get?
I have no idea.
Nobody talks about it.
But it's not a real course, there's no signs. It was maybe, I would dare say, improperly done, although I wasn't party to that as before I was on council. Kevin might have been.
But it was put in by Marysville Sport and Rec. And then they even went as the far as in 2010, it said that they had disc golf registration for... As a program. So just eight years ago, they were using it, and now they don't use it. And now, if you go out there, it is, how many acres? It is 26 acres. 26 acres at Lakeview compared to five at City Park.
Well, but a lot of those are contained inside ball fields, so if you want to use the tennis court metaphor, then most of that's actually not available. It's either parking lot or...
No, you would throw it away from... You could always station throwing away from the field. You could always have it like span out.
But there's with the parking... What about the parking lots and the three roads that are in those areas? I mean, that's the same road situation we have down here at the park.
Well, the park gets a lot more usage than Lakeview.
But does it? How many thousands did you say?
And down there, the, you know, behind the baseball field that we don't mow, there's that whole big area that you could put in. And look at the horse arena. Why do we have that a horse arena? It's full of weed, the metal is all broken down. We could take out the horse arena and you could use all that area, go down and use all that area down on the bottom. But it makes sense based on what the PDGA says on the acreage we need.
Well, that one recommendation, it doesn't meet, I'll agree. But the course we have up there, I don't really think it's a very ideal space. Sports and Rec didn't think it was a very good space for it up there. I think they were experimenting at the time, although that is not the word they used. I think accessibility is a huge thing because if I want to be able to do this with my kids, I don't want to be like, let's get in the car, let's drive to Lakeview and go out in the...
It's a sports complex, but you could make it work around obstacles.
You drive up there to ballgame.
No, I don't. I ride a bicycle. Almost get ran over because we don't have sidewalks or anything else up there.
Oh, it's free.
No, you're right. Sidewalks are a horrible idea, Diane. Anyway, no, I'm saying accessibility is a big thing. And the same argument when we looked at putting tennis courts up there the last time that went around was, you know, you lose a lot of accessibility. And I think if we want to succeed, want this free to us, disc golf, you know, to succeed, we need to make it accessible and visible and increase the usage of this park.
I'm all for that. But you put it where it fits. You don't smash it into the area.
You need a lot more acreage.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand why we're even talking about destroying something that's a legacy that was given to this town. That city park is for everybody. To go put concrete, to take... Put these things up and these pads, he said, are going to be 10 feet long, nine of them. We've got a green space down there, it's pretty nice. There's a lot of people here whose ancestors helped make that park what it is. For us to go in and do something that they haven't even proved will work.
Well, I think the main thing is, it doesn't... It says, you don't put it in a mixed area place. Put it in an isolated lot of available space where disc golf, ball field, with other park activities. Large parks with relatively little traffic. That is what Chautauqua is, that is what Warner is, and that's what Peonyland Park is. And you're trying to do something totally against what they say to do.
A lot of this isn't the lesser-used parts of the park. Along the trail, that is not a well-used piece of the park.
But you're going to be hitting people walking the trail, and you're going to be hitting the trees that were just planted.
I... Okay, I don't understand.
I don't see how...
Are you scared it's going to be so successful that there's going to be thousands of frisbees knocking down trees? Or are you so scared it's going to be so unsuccessful that it's a waste of time and energy? Because I feel like this is a cake and eating in two situations.
No, I want it to be utilized, so I want it a safe place. That makes sense.
If we want it utilized, we want it available. In a place where people will want to use it.
Safety first. They even say that, said that, safety first. The first concern should be safety.
I don't... I guess I don't think we're going to have so many crazy kids down there throwing frisbees that it's going to be an unsafe situation. They can throw frisbees now.
It doesn't matter, and it couldn't be an expert. You don't always know where your ball or your disc is going to go.
Well, no, but I mean, the same with tennis. They could hit it over the fence and it could hit somebody. It's the same with anything.
There is a fence.
Well, yeah, but the balls definitely go over. We found a half dozen of them while we were walking this course. I mean...
No problem there, I can understand that. I have golf balls in my yard and I'm a long way from a golf course.
Well, because somebody's... Which goes to the point of people are going to... If people are going to do something reckless, then our rules aren't going to solve that.
Mayor Brown, back to questions I proposed. Your ratios between acreage and the distance between holes, did you...
You have to come up to the podium, please.
Your analysis of acreage and acreage per hole, did you look at the tee off to basket, the distance between that versus the distance what he's trying to put in? Because I believe the distance he's trying to put in, the hole and the tee are a lot closer than the ones at those other parks. I mean, I know because I've played the other parks, but...
But you have to agree, Chautauqua's a huge park.
Yeah, and it's five or six par throws, whereas these are two or three par.
And it's 66 acres. And you go way down in to find the disc golf course, and it's way in the perimeter. It's not near a swimming pool or a playground, it's not crossing a street, it's not...
By campers.
Near a tree or a black squirrel figurine, or whatever we call it.
I mean, most of them go through trees.
Trees, though. That is the only thing that was out there, was trees. The only thing.
I know, but my point is, is the ratio between distance between pad and that is a lot different than the ratio between where we're trying to put it.
It's a lower park course.
It says here, it says that, let's see where this was.
But what's the average distance a yard is between?
We've lost about 100 trees in that area.
Who said that?
More trees would provide more safety to where the kids play, and it would be nice to look at where this is at.
I don't think any of those big oaks are going to go down.
Huntington Beach. They said they've lost 100 trees. Because they put a disc golf...
They cut them into a tree, I mean, if they were little, because they're landlings.
Yeah, but we just put new trees down... We just planted new trees down the Seventh Street walkway. And so now you're going to have a disc golf course that you're going to be throwing disc at these trees.
But actually, you're avoiding the trees, you're not throwing them at the trees. I mean, that's kind of the point.
Well, the most important thing is, it's a mixed area and there are a lot of people there at times. And a lot of campers, like this weekend, one time I drove through two huge RVs, two other campers, and one tender. And there's an area that people tend.
I think we can all agree on is, none of us are experts, but we did have an expert who went to a lot of legwork to actually bring this to us. I'd like to hear what he has to say.
Well, I'm kind of surprised that he would suggest that area.
A question I have is, you proposed the northwest portion of Lakeview, or the northeast, rather, wherever it's not being used.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Are we going to budget for maintenance of that, then, if it's part of the park? Because it's currently not being, you said, not being used.
Right. And they'd have to mow it, yes. But that's a pretty simple fix, to the point that nobody's going to get injured out there.
Well, I... The point that keeps getting brought up is the injury and, you know...
Speak up.
The point of this that you guys keep bringing up is the injury ratio or anything like that. I've spoke to, again, I've spoke to multiple park administrators that run parks in Chautauqua, Emporia, Riley County, Manhattan, and they encouraged you all to call them for further information.
But I went out there, and I'm not going to go to Emporia, too. I went to... I went to Wamigo, you told me to go to Wamigo. I went to Manhattan, you told me... Now you told me to go to Beatrice, so I drove all the way to Beatrice.
And there is several that come in very close contact to the bathrooms, the restrooms. Did you see those portions?
No, they're over... We walked the entire course, Kyle.
How many holes?
18.
It's like, no, it's much more than that.
It's 18.
No, it's more than that.
Well, you do the second round choosing different tee boxes, but it's the same 18 baskets.
My point is, is that we can try to put it elsewhere, but...
That would be great.
That's where it should be, somewhere else.
Just, why don't you...
It's not going to be as successful. I mean, look at what was put into Lakeview. No one uses it, one, because...
So why is that? Why does no one use it?
People are not going to want to go play, and I'm not a golfer, but they're not going to go and go play disc golf in an open place with no shade and just bake.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just not... It's the whole point of the disc golf, from what I see, is in a scenic area with trees.
No, it said open areas.
That's what a park is, but, I mean, if there was another park that we had, or if you want to create a new park...
I think you just need to come up with a different area. I am all... I am all for disc golf. Excuse me. I am all in favor of disc golf. I just don't think the city park is the right place.
I apologize, but I'm probably not going to explore any other areas due to the optics of it, the beauty, the natural beauty of our park. Like, Lakeview, yes, it's out there, but, you know, you get baked to death going and walking a park that's wide open.
Warner was like that.
Warner was...
Wide open.
Warner goes down through... A lot of holes go through trees. You have to throw out of trees, into trees, through trees, like they...
But you can make it over the hills. You could make the barriers at Lakeview over the hills and stuff. And the water function, water.
I don't think that it would work as well. The optics of it wouldn't be as wide open, you know, people utilizing the park itself. It's something that, if I see a disc golf course on the road and I have time, I pull over and play. Couple holes, just to get out and walk, you know? We drove by, actually, Emporia on our way to Lake by Wichita, and there was 20 people walking around Peter Pan Park, which cuts through multiple, multiple playgrounds, multiple multi-use areas that they say to avoid. But yet, Emporia has 1,100 people, competitors come through every year and they have zero issues with this.
Well, Darlene said that disc golf... Who told you that? It's real popular for college kids.
Yes, several people said, in college towns.
College towns are real crowded.
In college towns, and the 20s and 30-somethings are really into it.
And I'm not against it, I just don't think it makes sense for city park.
And all these towns were talked about, our college towns, including Beatrice.
But that's who the people we want to attract to this community are, those 20s and 30-somethings to work here and play here and raise their families here.
They're not going to move here just for disc golf.
Boost the school back up. No, no, you're right, but they aren't going to move here for a swimming pool, or a school, or a hospital, but they will for all of these things. It's cumulative.
We purchased a business here and moved here, and that's one of the first things that I look for, and is why I'm putting so much effort into bringing this here, because it's something that I'm passionate about, and I feel like others my age, younger, even little kids, are going to enjoy. But, you know, that's why I'm doing this, is this is our forever home now, and this is something that I find extremely important and valuable for this community. And that's... Yeah, maybe some of them are college towns, but at the same time, this is our forever home, and this is why I'm passionate about this.
Well, I don't think this golf would be great, but not in the city park.
Is there any way to put like two holes there or something?
Put what?
Put like one or two holes on that one side over near those trees, just to attract attention and then have another course... I know somebody mentioned the ferry park, have something out there? I don't know, I'm just trying to...
No, understood, and that's something that...
And have a sign that says, you know, we have a big course that here, you want to just, while your kids are playing in the park, go over here. I don't know.
Well, that's not a bad idea. You could have a couple of practice baskets and then have the full course up at Lakeview.
What we could do is, we could install the baskets and not put the permanent tee pads What we could do is we could install the baskets and not put the permanent tee pads in, and it could run for six, eight months. And, you know, see, another point that you brought up with the concrete is, if you see those disc golf courses without the concrete, the reason is, is they're underfunded. They didn't have enough money to be able to pour concrete into them. And I have budgeted for this. This course is fully funded by nine local businesses in the area. I mean, people obviously support it. It's something that they could easily get behind. But to your point, the reason the concrete, and the reason you see courses that don't have it, they're underfunded. They have enough to buy the baskets, they have enough to put it in a place.
Chautauqua was kinda beat up. A lot of the tee, the maps of the thing, was all bit. You couldn't read them. Some of the, you couldn't even read all the holes.
And that's probably, I don't know if it's budgeted to maintain that for their city park, or what, how they do their process for maintaining it. But, you know, again, this would be privately funded, and that's something...
Well, once you put it in the city park, though, it becomes our responsibility.
Once it goes in the city, it is the city's.
Absolutely. And that's what I want. That's the point, is...
Well, then we would have to budget it, I mean, the improvements and stuff.
Not if I, you know, I have, I think that the total cost of this was right around four thousand nine hundred and some dollars, and I currently have five thousand five hundred dollars budgeted, raised, ready to go for this. And that's something that I feel like that I could have fundraisers for this course, fundraising tournaments for it, that we could raise additional money for future maintenance of this. Big blue barbecue tournaments, the tournaments we spoke about with, you know, little kids and the onset of childhood obesity. We could raise money for hunger. There's already tournaments out there for...
Well, like this, like this map here, this is that part I was talking about. Now, this right, this big area right there, who owns this? This area, great big area right here.
You guys saw the highway?
That's right there. Who owns that big area?
This is right away, right here.
Who owned it?
That's the highway.
The state of Kansas.
K-Dot?
Yeah, this is our little piece of sign right there.
So, how much, all the way to here, we can't access?
No.
Who owns this?
That's ours.
Now, see, you could come over here, instead of cramming it all into the city golf course. If we own this four and a half acre, four point nine acres, who owns this here?
That's Chromie.
Chromie owns one and two? Kevin, you own one and two right here in this map? Yes. Is this your property right there, this one and this one?
Well, this here and this corner right here.
You own this?
Yeah.
And these two lots?
And these three.
Okay.
Well, this block and this half block, and then these six lots right here.
So, okay, so those aren't for sale. So what we do have, though, is... What we do have is four point nine acres here.
I apologize. May I?
Sure. Now, this is wooded, and we'd probably have to clear some stuff out. Excuse me?
That's woolly.
It's woolly. See, that'd be good for a golf course, woolly.
There's a waterway in there. Is there actually water in it usually?
Well, it...
When it rains.
Water drains off the 14th Street.
Right there.
See, it makes sense to me, Kyle. This is right near city park. People could cross walking, not throwing a disc, and walk. And then they could play this course and come back. I mean, I...
I guess it would be on the private landowners if they want them to cross from... Because are we discussing having part of the holes in city park?
No, I was gonna say, yes.
All of it in four point nine acres?
Along the trail and the park area.
Yeah, I was just saying, if you take, I was not as opposed to the ones on the west side of the trail. And then bring it over here and throw here and circle back, and stay away from the main park area.
We'd probably need to put in a crosswalk to get across there, because we have one at the end of the trail, but there's nothing on the east side.
Yeah.
Apparently. It would need a corresponding cross.
But, I mean, I was just trying to come up with a compromise.
Absolutely.
That, I mean, I just, having it squeezed in the city park is squeezing it in. So I was trying to come up with an option where we could make it work adjacent to the park, still keep it available and all the things you want, but make it more suitable.
Yeah, and it would definitely, I mean, I'm open to, you know, planning through there and seeing if that could happen. But I agree, it would have to have some of it in this portion, because as you stated, the four point nine acres would not be enough to have it on its own.
All of it, no. And to be honest, some of that area I wasn't opposed to. It's just when you got in the middle of the park, I was kinda like, this kinda makes me nervous. I didn't like throwing over a street.
And that can be, I mean, again, these are, this can be changed. It's something, even that day that we walked through, discussed that I could have the basket on the opposite side of the street that it's currently on right now. Yeah, I mean, this is definitely, obviously not set in stone, but it's something that I think that for accessibility, it does need to be at least starting in this portion of the park, but...
I'm okay if you somehow spread it out and keep it away from the main area of the park.
And we can, I can definitely...
You're totally concerned.
I can try to do so.
I'm opposed. I want it to be a roll call vote. People want this real bad. I want it to be a roll call vote, because I want everybody in town to know who voted it in when some little kid gets deformed because he's helpless in his stroller and one of these things gets away, because this is for everybody. It's not for disc golfers. That's a city park.
So, are you wanting to make a motion that we not, we look for other places to have it totally? That's your request?
I move we table this until he gets a chance to look across 77 at that piece of property and maybe bring a revised proposal. I move we table it.
Madam Mayor.
Nobody made a motion. Does the motion, anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Well, we have to approve that. He made a motion to table it.
For him to gather more information.
So...
I'll second that, to table it.
Table it. But the purpose to table it, Todd, is to what?
To get, for Kyle to gather further information, explore across the road as you recommended we look at.
Okay.
And they'll tell our city attorney to do some investigating.
About, well, let's go ahead and finish. So that, his motion was to wait to see if we can utilize that other space and spread it out.
And maybe see a revised proposal.
Revised, still at city park.
Correct.
And yours was a second. Okay, so that's our motion to table and to have Kyle investigate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So everybody said yes, table. Was that a yes, table, Darlene?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes, I'd like to ask Kyle a question.
Wait a second, Todd?
Aye.
Yours was table, and yours was table. Okay, I'm sorry. So it's a table six oh for you to look at that other property.
Can, do you want anybody on the Parks Committee to be involved in that? I mean, I guess that's not really under any group's dominion right now, that city property over there?
No.
If it's gonna become part of a park, then...
So, what I would like you to do, if you're gonna bring back a revised area, potential map, not to cross a highway. We talked about not crossing a street. What was the other one? Not throwing a street. Not throwing, or a major sidewalk. That was the two things, or near the squirrel.
Okay.
So if you can look at that and see how, somehow you could incorporate that.
Again, it would take, you know, if you're crossing private property, it's gonna be, I'd have to look into that as well as far as accessing that four point nine acres.
Well, we might not wanna vacate his alley.
Do we wanna take this map with, does he want...
I just wanna discuss this for a minute. He's proposing that we vacate that alley, and that alley would be the access point to the four point nine acres.
I'm not proposing anything. I'm saying...
No, I'm saying Kevin Chromie.
I'm...
There is access right up the highway to the city.
Well, couldn't you just cross from the park over?
From the corner of the trail?
Yeah.
There's a sidewalk on the corner on the northwest.
Up to that little corner, and then just maybe put in a...
This, this corner here. The city property line is about right here.
Oh, we own this to get to this?
Yeah, this is all connected right here.
So you're saying our real property line is right here, we'd have an access? You're positive?
Well, that's the city most...
Okay, well, that's a good sign. Okay. Do you agree with that, Austin, that we own that access point right there after the right of way?
I agree that we'd probably mow it.
It might be part of the highway.
Yes.
I wanna ask Kyle a question. Somehow, rather this all got started, then, I understood you said the other night that you were working with Brian Frogel?
Yes, sir.
Did he tell you about the place I showed him?
He did not, he did not mention anything.
Because when you're talking recreation and doing something like this, where it should be, and the ground is there, is right where you walk in to go on the trail. There's about forty-five acres there. There's a shelter, there's...
I'm not familiar with where that's at, but I can, I can look into it.
Why don't you ask Brian to take you out there, because it's a very nice place, and if you worked with the trail people, they'd probably like it, and it would tie in with everything this town wants to do as far as connecting the trail, fixing the depot, and everything. And people will stay safe in the park, because they're not gonna get hit in the mouth when they're two years old. They're not gonna get hit with a frisbee. And you guys can play frisbee till hell freezes over out there, if you talk to them.
Well, he's talking about right at the trailhead, where inline building is, right after you go through the gate?
Understood, yeah.
It used to be a feedlot and, yeah, other stuff.
It wasn't a feedlot, it was a hog barn.
It was a hog barn, and there were several...
Who owns the property?
My understanding from talking to the trail is, yeah, that they have, that the trail group has an easement to do because of rail's conservancy, unless they turn it back into rails. But I don't know if it's over the entirety. Some of it is sublet, or there's some, it's one of those weird areas. Because of the railroad and the ownership.
It's about sixty acres there.
But, yeah, it's, and right now, it's like haymeadow.
No, it's just, it's just brushy. Nobody puts hay up there.
Well, I know, but I mean, it's, there's not much for trees. There's just a lot of grass, very thick brush.
There's thick trees on the other side.
On the hill and everything else that always disperates.
There's no, there's no water or bathroom, though.
That's true.
And then the trail's gonna, once it gets into town, I don't know.
I wonder if there's a bathroom at Warner Park. Is there a bathroom at Warner Park?
Yes.
There is a bathroom there?
Warner Park, where's that?
That, actually, in Manhattan. I don't, I wanted to...
I'd sure like for you to look at that, Kyle.
I sure can, yeah. I mean, but, I mean, I feel like that's adding another entity that I will have to work with, that's unique Pacific, or landowners, or trail.
No.
I think it's just the trail that owns it.
The Trail, Marshall County connections is the group, but, yeah. So, as far as checking this out, does he wanna check it out on his own? Does he need a map as far as across the highway there on 77? Because, I don't think you probably have the map that we've been looking at.
I can look it up.
Can you get it?
Page twenty in our packet.
It's in our agenda, too, so...
I guess I'd have to propose another question, as in, who would maintain it at the trail? Would the trail be responsible for it?
No, the disc people would be. If you want it, take care of it. You work with them.
I can look into it.
If it's in the city, the city people are gonna take care of it for you. They don't need to work for the disc people.
Before we work with tennis people.
What I'm proposing is that it's in an area that's already being maintained.
Swimming people.
It would already be integrated onto the main.
Well, this is all maintained the way it is. You know, it's natural, it's native. If this is natural as can be.
Well, even this, I mean, to be honest, we'd have to clear some of this out to make it all work, but there'd be big trees.
This is underutilized.
There would be trees.
This is underutilized, which I like. I mean, like the garden area where, you know, we...
And there wouldn't be kids running around. So if you can figure out how we can make that work, you have four and a half acre, four point nine acres.
I will explore it later.
Okay, well, thanks for being understanding.
No, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Jackson Street Sale. I hope this one's a little shorter. So... I skipped. There was, Austin said there was one bid, which is on page eighteen. Nick is here. Congratulations on the new baby, new baby girl. Do you guys have any questions regarding his offer for that property? That's on page eighteen.
We didn't put a minimum, did we?
Less property to mow.
And he's gonna develop it.
Exactly.
So, I would entertain a motion to sell that property for the fifty-six hundred that Nick stole offered?
Nick, did you wanna say something first?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna look into possibly asking to waive the building permit for something that would be developed on that property.
I think that's a small fee to pay. But we are setting a precedent, aren't we?
I mean, I don't have a problem with waiving a building permit, but then, wait for everybody. I mean, do it for one business, and you gotta do it for every business. Keep it fair.
Every business isn't building infill housing in West Marysville.
No, but, I mean, but...
Not to be fair.
What is the building permit?
It's first, uh, square foot.
So, do you know what the calculation is about?
It's, it's like sixty-five cents plus the water hookups and sewer hookups.
Well, if we do that, we need to have a policy, a policy, so that when we have people who are willing to develop empty lots or make improvements, that we treat everybody the same.
If this encourages people to build on these kinds of lots, then I'm kinda thinking even if it is that pressing, it'd be good.
How fast are you gonna build?
Well, I own next to it, which was a big part of obviously why I thought this was important. So that's gonna be developed first, and then this would be later. But, I mean, you know, we had a discussion about housing, so I'm even open to what that plan is, because I have a pretty good plan for what's gonna go next to it, but nothing's set in stone for what's gonna be...
On this specific property?
Yeah. And the problem with this one is, versus the last one, it's gonna take ten thousand dollars of dirt to fill it in, which nobody else can do. Trust me.
Well, maybe we should have a policy that, like, if we know that you're making an X amount of investment, that this is the, you know, and we build up some kinda, I'm sure there's economic development policies like that from other cities, that if you're gonna invest X amount of money, that we waive whatever we choose to waive.
I would like to see, though, that if we do come up with a policy...
Okay.
That it be in the, what we call the main city limits.
Oh, that's a good point. Instead of the exterior territorial, that outweighing that we have to put infrastructure in. So to encourage housing, or there's existing, that's a good point.
Like Nick has done.
Okay.
Using existing infrastructure.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So why don't we have the Finance and Admin Committee come make a recommendation to council? So, since you're not in a rush, we'll have a meeting and discuss what it could possibly be and bring it back.
Okay.
Okay?
You're still interested in it, even if we don't waive them, right? So, I mean, we can approve the sale now and do that later?
Right.
So, F and A will get together and propose something to bring to council, try to think of something that makes sense. I do like the idea, though, that we go where we already have water, sewer, and streets for people to invest, where the infrastructure's already there. That makes a lot of sense.
That's good.
Okay, so, did I, did we have a motion to approve?
Not yet.
Okay.
Move to approve the purchase of Nick stole of the property on Jackson.
I'll second, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So seven oh. Now Bobby has arrived. All right. Moving along, now Kevin Chromie's, he's waited patiently for his turn here.
I didn't see that coming.
That we'd be looking at your map?
Kevin Chromie, he lives at 600 South Eleventh, which is right at the corner of Leventon and Jackson. And, um, and, like, I put some notes in there, kinda the history of the property there. Manley's owned that, and we bought it from them in about 2005, I believe. You know, it's been twelve years. We moved in there in 2007, like that. When we purchased this property, the NPI title search showed that our house encroached on Jackson Street to the north of our house, and the garage encroaches on Eleventh Street to the, to the west. And we approached city council at that time to have half of Jackson Street vacated, so that we could purchase the property. But it also showed that the garage was like five feet onto Eleventh Street. The garage's been there since like the thirty or forties. They used to use it for wrestling mats and things like that. They shored in there for the school years ago. And, um, but once we did the property survey, it showed that the garage was actually eleven feet onto Eleventh Street instead of five feet. So there's still six feet that is encroaching on, on Eleventh Street. So what I was proposing to do was to vacate Eleventh Street, dividing it between us and the Hulas. That would be the house to the west. And since that street access goes nowhere but onto my property or to Hulas, there's no way, nowhere for anybody to go down there. And the property to the south of that is abandoned. I mean, it's, it's just grown up in trees. You can't even walk through there. It's that thick.
Where we're gonna put the disc golf course?
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna have to clear a little bit.
Oh, yeah, it would take, it would take months to clear that, to open that up enough to utilize that for disc golf.
Who owns that abandoned?
Well, what I'm talking about, kinda the abandoned property there, the city owns a majority of that.
That street, that, that street that goes diagonal?
The city owns, this is that four point nine, there, the whole of the house, and this is the footwork.
You get old right of way?
Yeah, this, this dirt road that cuts all the way through, what's that used for?
Well, it's where the railroad tracks used to be. We use it for access to that property down there, because we, we have it farmed, and they bring a combine through there, and stuff down that old railroad road. But when the railroad pulled out of there, they abandoned those adjacent lots. They used to cut off the corners of those lots where the rail used to be. And so after they abandoned that, those lots have been restored to the original size.
Which is what those red lines show?
Which pushes our property line to the south across that road. So we own the, own the entrance to that road and also the east entrance to that road. And then Polson's own a corner in there, and the city owns a corner in there. And then Hulas own a quarter up there by the highway. And a lot of the reason that we wanna vacate it also is because people use that as a shortcut. They turn off the highway at the, at the Marysville sign, and they drive through there, and then up through the Thirteenth Street right of way to, to access housing on the other side of the, the other side of the high school, because all those streets are blocked off. They have to go clear up to, like, Walworth. They have to go clear up to like Walnut, I think, to come across. So they turn in off the highway and they go out and then they come back out that way. And they're crossing our property, your property, the Paulsons', our property down here on the other end. There are on occasions I've, there's been vehicles that stop down there and it's hidden from the highway. You can't see all the way down that road. And one day I was down there and there was a guy sitting there drinking beer and he was pitching cans off into the weeds. And so I drove up behind him and told him to keep moving. And there's whiskey bottles and beer cans and beer bottles and all kinds of stuff laying down in there. And we kind of pick them up as they, as they appear, but then last year about deer season, shortly after deer season, there was a deer carcass somebody threw out down there. And so it's just, I feel like we can't really keep people out of there because you guys have some property that actually needs to access from that direction too, so.
So, so they did vacate half of Jackson for your house? Did I understand that right? To the north?
To the north. And they actually.
They left a half street in there?
They were going to vacate the entire street, but Bart Manley lived in the house to the north at the time and she said she didn't want to pay the taxes on the property. So she, she just opted out of it. She didn't take it, so.
So we have a half street there.
So I don't know if Kate would be, you know, willing to clean the other half of that up or not, or not. I don't know.
There used to be a metal building in there too, facing the street. That's not there anymore.
It's gone. But it was, it was positioned north of the street. It wasn't, it wasn't on the street right of way.
I guess you can kind of see it in the picture.
Yeah, I think it's still in the picture there. Yeah.
Now you, I asked that question, Austin, and you said from the 09 minutes, Water Director Wheeler said this is the only access to the rail bed maintenance area? Only access to the rail bed area for maintenance. And you talked about water and sewer lines? So do we need to keep access?
We have water and sewer lines that run down 11th Street. We, at the very minimum, need an easement to access those. Because they, there needs to be a water sewer easement through 11th Street.
Bound to where?
Because I think it turns, I think there's also, it goes along in that area, just along that pathway and turns up, if I remember right.
The water and sewer lines?
Yeah. There's a, because the sewer comes up and goes over on Jackson. So it goes through that area.
So normally when we vacate an alley or a street, do we build in that we need easement, water and sewer easements to the property?
I don't know about vacating. I know initially there's usually easements in flats and stuff going, this is where our water lines are going to go and this is where our sewer lines are going to go. So it would be.
But once you, well, if we get an easement though, they can't build over it, right?
They can. They just got, they just have the, they just have the understanding. I mean, actually, no, we discourage permanent structures over, over stuff like that. If they put a fence over a water line or a sewer line, the property owner knows that if we have to go in and maintain it, they have the cost of replacing that, that fence over the water line or sewer line or whatever. But permanent structures are, we shouldn't be having them built over water and sewer easements.
How do you guys feel about 11th Street vacating it?
Well, I mean, like he said, on the Jackson Street, I'm okay with 11th Street personally. Like as long as we do maintain easements like Austin said, but I just say we, we just as well clean up Jackson Street, the other half of Jackson Street while we're down there. Yeah. If she, if she'll accept that, we'd have to get ahold of her. But there's a number of these places we've kind of been hitting one at a time and this is right beside the other one. It'd be kind of nice just to clean it up.
If we could, if we could get also an easement established through that driveway that's already there.
Now which street are you on?
I'm talking about this pathway that's, we've been using already.
Now.
Are you talking about the old rail bed?
Yes.
And I noticed Union Pacific still has signs down there by the highway saying, "Union Pacific Property, No Trespassing." I don't think anybody, I don't know why their signs are still there.
I would just like, it was forgotten. Because we, we drive down this one to, to get to the levee right now currently. Even though it is going through their properties and Kevin has been nice enough to say you'd still be welcome. He just doesn't want somebody speeding, if I'm correct, in what our conversation was.
The people that do come through there are, they come in off of the highway and they're, you know, doing 30 or 40 miles an hour by the time they get to our house.
What if we had to put like a gate, some kind of small gate structure, just even a pipe gate, you know, with, with an arm and a chain so we can unlock it, he can unlock it, anybody needs in there, but we'll just stop that traffic.
Are you talking about the gate right there where we own property?
Well, if you'd put that in like to the, the west of Houla's.
Yeah.
Then that would keep them off of Houla's and.
Right, right where the Union Pacific sign is right now, pretty much.
Yeah.
You mean right there, Todd? Well, would we have the right to do that? You're saying way up here?
Right there, right there.
Put a gate up there?
Yeah.
That's our property, I guess.
Yeah.
That's what you said.
Right of way. Yeah, it would, well, it's either that or the highway easement. I'm not sure.
Why not, why not do that now and then we can do further research? Because we need to know, you know, water sewer, where, where all our lines are and actually.
We'd have to draft an ordinance to vacate it anyway, wouldn't we?
Yeah.
I mean, it would, you know, across, if you put a pipe gate or something over your cross to the west there, the problem with that being as if that other street is still open, they're just going to turn right into our house. And then that's going to force everything that's coming off of the highway, they'll come through and just drive through anyway.
If we vacate 11th between you and Houla's, are you planning on blocking it off somehow there to?
Well, we just, at the least, just wanting to put, you know, a private drive sign so people realize that it's not accessible to the public. I mean, if we wouldn't gate it off now, it would just be signed just sometime.
In theory, I mean, except for the right of way issues, like you said, temporary fences or things, it really probably wouldn't hurt if it were blocked off, but, I mean, because if we kept, we had a gate there on the west end already, we would have the access we needed to get to the right of way.
And then, I mean, I'm, I'm fine if we have to do more research on it, on it. Because my concern is, as I was talking with Kent about just the lines that go down 11th Street, is are we going to have immediate access? And from the sounds of it, he just wants to put a sign up. The, also the concern is if Kevin, whatever happens to Kevin in the future, whatever happens to the property in the future, if it changes hands, are we going to, we're going to have to have something in writing for those future property owners to know that we still have access to these. So it's not a handshake agreement, if you will. Like on some of this is pretty much a handshake agreement on that pathway that passes through his property. We don't have a, we don't have.
Nothing formalized?
Nothing formalized. We just are fortunate to have a good neighbor.
We don't have an easement filed at the courthouse.
It's just, we're driving through their properties and they've allowed us to do that.
So you're proposing that we come back next meeting and you tell us about water sewer and what we need to do and see if that works for you? Are you okay with that, Kevin?
Oh, yeah.
And do you, are you going to get ahold of the other landowners like Paulson's and those along their Houla's where we, we need to work with them on an easement too on that?
I guess you'd, on this 3.9 acres, we'd have to have access right there.
Yeah, and on Houla's corner there. And maybe get ahold of Kate Manley on that Jackson Street, half of Jackson Street, see if she was interested. Just a bunch of phone calls and I saw.
Yeah.
Okay. So we don't know what we need yet. We're working on it. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right.
And then on, I guess on 13th Street, that was kind of the other, the other issue was.
Now is 13th Street?
People come down or into that.
Is this 13th Street right here?
Yes, 13th, yes.
Okay.
And they don't, you know, they don't have any other way out. There's nothing down there for them to go in there for. Except the only reason they go south down 13th Street is so they can drive out on that other.
So putting another gate on that end is what you're thinking?
It was kind of what I was thinking, or some kind of barricade or something. Yeah.
Probably there's anti-pavement.
If it's a pipe gate, it's like, is it like padlocked? When we call it pipe gate?
Yeah, usually it's a swing arm pipe, like a three inch pipe. And yeah, it has a chain on the end that moves.
And you don't need access in there?
Well, it would be nice to have access in there, but from that direction, if, you know, we bring anything into the, into that property down there.
It would be if the landowners, you could have the landowners in that, that would be affected by that area have a key that the city would have too.
Who's at number three? Who's that, who's the lot right above you? Who has that?
Uh, that's mine also.
One, two and three? It's all yours?
Yeah.
And it looks like there's an alley between three and two there, which I don't know, who, who lives there at the, the bottom of 13th Street where pavement ends?
Uh, Mike Day.
That's right. Does he access that property from the south side? His property from the south there? Because there's an alleyway, it looks like according to the.
Yeah, the alleyway is actually right on that concrete ditch there.
Is it right on the edge? Okay.
It's, well, there's like a concrete drainage ditch that comes off 13th Street. And it connects to that one on 14th and then it takes on around. So the alley easement is like right in that ditch.
So you would want a gate at the end of that alley, the south side of that alley?
That's, yeah, I suppose you'd do it at the end of that easement would be the cleanest way to do it.
There used to be a, there's an old wooden post there that was cut off. There used to be a cable that was across that drive, which I don't know if is a safe way to do it because people may be riding their bike down through there and see the cable rip right off their bike.
I drove down there for the first time. I never do. Did you see me drive by your house?
Nope, no.
I was like, I don't even know these streets, so I drove down there. But it was pretty secluded. Okay. So I think we're going to do some more research on water sewer, figure out what easements we need and bring it to the next council. Is that true? Is that what everybody's okay with? All right.
It'll be what day?
It'll be the 11th.
July 11th.
June 11th.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. The next one is a change in the personnel policy. When I was at the league meeting, they were, they mentioned that it's important in your personnel policy to stipulate how you expect non-exempt employees and exempt employees to use vacation hours. And ours is real, we have three positions that are exempt. City Administrator, City Clerk and Chief of Police. And right now, the only thing that we have listed, we made an amendment in our code book in December of 2016 and we changed the minimum hours. It says employees may use vacation leave in units if not less than one hour, subject to the approval of their department head. So that was the amendment we've made. And that is the only thing that's stated about utilizing vacation in our personnel policy. So the whole concept about exempt versus non-exempt is, you know, the exempt employees do not get paid overtime. They're expected to be a different type of employee. They, they're paid a certain salary. They're expected to work overtime. They're not entitled to overtime pay, but their pay is supposed to compensate them for that. Their duties will fall into categories of executive and professional and administrative. They usually supervise other people. So those positions definitely qualify as what one would call exempt employees. And all this is doing, I, and so when the league's recommended doing it, I just went to the Manhattan Personnel Book and, and published this page 65 or printed it off from their employee manual. And basically ours would say basically the same thing. The only thing, under, under non-exempt employees, it would just say vacation time should be used in no less than one hour increments. That's the only thing we would have to change under that non-exempt. And then the exempt employees, we really, really wouldn't have to change that either except pulling out what they have in parentheses about battalion chiefs, because that wouldn't apply to us. So it'd just be stipulating that when you're away from your normal business office, doing personal things, that you should take accrued vacation. And it's just stipulating, so it's in our personnel policy. So, you know, I think.
If I could mention one thing, we don't, we don't have flex time in our policy right now. This accounts for flex time.
Down here for the non-exempt, but.
Just pointing it out.
But we kind of allow that, don't we, for some positions? And I know we're flexible as far as, you know, that when they say, we, we just changed the hours for the street people to seven to five because of the heat. So instead of eight to five, but you know, like ours, our normal hours in the city hall is eight to five. And I think that's a, you know, that, that example there is kind of clear cut about what we would expect. That exempt employees should be subject to using accrued vacation, just like all the non-exempt people.
I think that's pretty standard.
Yeah. They just said it needs to be documented in your personnel policy. I did not request page 66 to be in there. I only requested page 65. And I, and I should have, you know, boxed in that A and B because that's the only thing that I thought needed to be added to our personnel policy. So are you guys okay if I draft up a little cleaner copy of this for, to, for our personnel policy? Make a policy resolution? Just stated as this. The only thing I do have a little question on is, you know, the chief, he doesn't work eight to five. So I, when I was talking to him, I just said, well, if you didn't work a 40-hour week, I would expect you to take vacation, you know, whether, whenever those 40 hours are, since they're on 24/7. And he said, I understand that.
What, what is considered his standard day?
Well, since they work 24/7. I mean, he said, you know, he, he signs this book too, that he'll adhere to this. Does it specifically say business officer, eight to five?
I don't think so. 40 hours a week is what it says. Pretty true.
40 hours a week. So when I talked to him, I said, well, I would expect you that if you don't work 40 hours during a given week, that you would take accrued vacation. He goes, well, that's understood. Or he would agree. So we could put a little sentence in there saying that police, Chief of Police would do it based on 40 hours a week.
40 hours, five, eight-hour days for general employees and then.
Well, this one specific says, police chief shall be 40 hours considered five, eight-hour days, but they don't adhere to that. Right there. Lisa.
What you're saying is Todd, Todd doesn't show to work every day for eight hours?
Todd doesn't work eight to five.
No, I'm saying the eight to five, but he, when does he show up? It doesn't, it's kind of, it's kind of just flex for him?
He doesn't work eight, he doesn't work eight-hour days, whether he works eight to five or is what she's saying, I think.
I don't know, Austin. What, what does he work?
Sometimes he gets called out and he has to work a scene. He has to work an investigation. He has to be a part of something that's outside of the normal eight to five.
But eight to five is what he's considered to be.
At the office.
At the office.
That was, yeah.
Not, I mean, not always.
Well, not always, but that's.
Yeah, if.
That's what, it would be considered to be his regular time to be available, eight to five. But we understand about the emergencies. In the book, it would say eight to five. And then, you know, we know that he's all like, Austin works outside his time.
Well, that's about, and the whole thing about exempt is they're expected to work overtime to do the job that their job description describes.
And that's fine, yeah.
And their pay is supposed to compensate for that.
So they're, so basically, we're understanding that about Todd's position. Okay. Eight to five, yeah. Sometimes. Eight to five, yeah, sometimes it will flux because of the situation going on, but why should there be any kind of exemption?
On this?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, as long, I mean, I just wanted to clarify with him that if he worked, doesn't work 40 hours in a given week, I would expect him to take a crude vacation, which is basically what this is saying.
Yeah. And I mean, that's, we expect this from Austin, we expect it.
Well, the positions, not the, the positions. So I will draft up a policy that basically says basically this. You guys have a problem with any of that? I think it's pretty clear cut.
So how, how much different, I came out in the end of this, obviously. How much different is that from what we have in our book now?
We all, we don't have anything stated in our book now, breaking down between exempt and non-exempt.
Okay. All right.
And the, and the only thing we have is the minimum hours of usage. That's the only thing about vacation leave. Just that one sentence I read.
Okay.
So we would just expand on that.
Okay, well, I mean, we can look it over, is what we can do. You can draft it, we can look it over, and then we can yea or nay it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, I, I'm pretty much is gonna, verbatim, gonna be what this says. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, because they're doing it, you're doing this anyway. You're work, you're, you're supposed to be there at a certain time, but if you're not, and you're on city time, it's not one way or the other. You're still within your time, and you're getting paid for your time. And if you have to work over, you're compensated because of your salary, correct?
Your, exempt employees are considered, um, executive, which means overtime is expected and required for the job.
But I'm just saying, their regular time, like with Todd, okay, he's supposed to be there eight to five, but sometimes he's not gonna be there because of other situations that have to do with his job, and we all understand that. I just don't want this to be a, as long as it's not a personal matter, and they're doing business for the city, any three of them, just because they're not right there at the desk all the time, if they're off doing, you know, city business.
Well, if they're at the pool, working at the pool, at the course.
Yeah.
That would be working eight to five.
That's right.
If they are at the pool swimming, I would expect them to take vacation.
Well, yeah, that's fine. I'm just saying.
Good example.
That's fine. I'm just saying, but a lot of people think eight to five, you have to be behind your desk every second. Well, no, if you get called over here, there's a problem, and this, this, the city, the sewer guys need you over here to make a decision. Don't worry if you get called over to another.
That's on the job, though, but...
That's fine, okay. I just want that clarified.
Well, uh...
I think this is like taking a vacation, um...
Just for personal.
Say, yeah, some kind of, oh, like...
Having a tooth hole?
Well, that'd be medical. Oh, like, say, getting your hair highlighted or something like that. That would be, you'd have to take vacation.
I got a question.
I think the key thing, wait one second. I think the key thing is that the one, what they listed there is an example, just to clarify what we're meaning by that. And hopefully, that would be clear enough that people will understand. If you're away from your desk, but you're doing city business during that time, that if you're away from your desk and doing personal business, you should take accrued vacation. That's basically what it's saying. What were we gonna say, Jason?
Uh, I was just to ask, uh, it says here, an exempt employee's, uh, immediate supervisor may waive the use of vacation for partial day absences due to unusual workload requirements. Taking into account work time is required beyond the workday. And who would that be? The council? So, say Todd took off in the middle of the day because he'd been working a case late, then is he gonna come to the council and we're gonna waive?
That's me.
That's you. Then for you, then, you'd have to come to the council?
Yeah.
And we would waive?
But unusual workload would not be like a council meeting or a budget meeting. It would be like, if we had an emergency, we had a tornado hit. That'd be kind of an unusual workload. I'm just giving an example.
I know. I, I understand that, but it's like...
Yeah.
Yeah. Snowstorm, whatever.
But, you know, if it's described in your job description, it would not be part of your unusual workload. I guess that's how I should say it.
Okay.
Well, I'll draft it up, all right, for the next meeting?
Is there any way with policies like this that you could actually talk with the people it's affecting?
Well, the league of Kansas municipalities suggested we do that.
Talk with the people that...
No, to clarify, in our personnel policy, what we expect of exempt and non-exempt employees...
This was the only policy you pulled up. And the reason I requested page 66 being involved was, yes. Manhattan basically turned their exempt employees into hourly employees without the benefit of being an hourly employee. They also pay them with a lot of vacation.
Well, I, I, I don't have a problem with our vacation schedule.
Yeah, but that's not, you're not getting vacation. This is us.
Yeah, but I think our vacation is fair, our policy.
But you're taking their policy, their policy. You're, you're taking Manhattan's policy?
No, but league, the league act said we should list out specifically exempt versus non-exempt, and that's what I'm doing. I could have pulled liberal Kansas. I just pulled...
But would it be the same?
It wouldn't be the same.
Not everybody has this policy.
Well, this would be our decision if we're happy with this policy.
Okay, but Manhattan has this policy. You pulled that policy. They also have the policy of handsomely rewarding them with vacation that they could use when there's, when they are away from their desk.
Do you know off the top of your head what their vacation policy is?
Huh?
Dude, I'm just curious. Do you know off the top of your head what their vacation policy is?
As far as...
You said it's handsome, so...
Well, it's, it's a 66, page 66.
Oh, oh, I see. That's what you're calling it.
Yes, yeah, they, they double it right away.
Okay.
Well, I'm happy with our vacation schedules we have planned, so I'm gonna go ahead and draft up the policy as directed. The league recommend that we do. Okay? All right, let's go ahead. I don't, I'm not aware of any notices or hearings, so we'll move along to the consent agenda. Number one has been pulled, so the only thing on the consent agenda is the consumption request. I'm gonna indicate a motion to approve the consumption request.
Move to approve.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven, oh.
I didn't know the, the number one was pulled.
It was pulled because they found out it was double billed. Is that correct?
We paid it already.
Oh, okay.
All right, moving along for the appropriations ordinance?
I moved that appropriations ordinance number 3675, uh, be approved, and one of the large items is this, we paid for the street sweeper, $194,914, and we, that's after the $9,000 trade-in allowance.
Okay, but your motion is to approve the ordinance, right?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second to approve the ordinance?
I'll second it.
Okay, now you can say, 195,000 is a street sweeper. Is there anything else you wanna point out?
No.
I just didn't want that to be part of your motion. That's why I interrupted you. Sorry. Okay, there are some airport fees in there, and the seating at the airport? I went out there. It's, it's not like real nice there. It was seated. Are you happy with it?
They recently seated. It's not growing. It's not...
Oh, it's so...
It just seeds right now.
Have you guys been out the airport lately? Anybody got out?
I have, but I didn't look at the grass.
Did you look at the grass?
I just didn't, no, I was just thinking about...
Like beside, it's, but you're saying they just...
They were just recently doing it, yes. That's why we have, we've waited so long.
It's been kinda dry. Maybe it, it'll help.
It doesn't look very good right now.
Yeah, spring's usually not a good time to plant grass.
Well, this has been really dry and hot.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
And Barnes?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right. Austin, you're up.
Uh, downtown tree program. Basically, the tree committee met, and, uh, they recommended, uh, we did, that we move forward with this project that was presented with the changes they, they suggested. For instance, the, uh, instead of putting a lace bark elm at the corner of Eighth and Center, they, uh, wanted to put a, I think it's a crab apple, a flowering crab apple, uh, in that, uh, to match the other three. Uh, included a map, uh, of, oh, I thought I did. Where'd you go? Uh, a map of where the trees, uh, specific types, uh, the lace bark elms on the west portion, um, the, uh, Main Street maple in the center, and then the three, uh, golden colonnades on the, on the, um, eastern portion, uh, over by the library and such. Um, so, uh, their one word, uh, or of discussion was, uh, basically be mindful of how the watering schedule is, and we wanna, uh, make sure we get them watered enough, uh, so we can, uh, make sure these, uh, survive.
Yeah, the tree board really wants to get it in before Boss Nationals. It's kinda funny. They said, can we get these in before Boss Nationals? So they're all in, they're all in, just for the record. And, um, the only thing, uh, Austin said that on the Gudenkopf one, where, on page 33, where it says, maintenance of care of the trees does include pruning, because he was, he said it was specified in the bid. So, and then they did say they needed to be watered four times, right, if they're brand-new planted in August?
It, um, no, uh, I think, well, what Kim Bonberger, uh, recommended is if we get, uh, whenever we plant them in the fall, we water them once a week until first week of October.
So that'd be eight waterings, and one, once a week, if we plant them in August, it'd be eight waterings?
It'd be, if it, if we made it to August, yeah, yeah.
To October?
Yes, to October, for at least the first of October.
So if you go to the Prairie Stone one, and if you just take the 425 watering, and you take a times of 28 that Gudenkopf has, their total comes to, uh, 22,896. And then I asked Austin to print out the Main Street maple versus the flowering crab apple, and you said, if anything, it'd be slightly less.
Yeah, I asked, uh, Gudenkopf, uh, what the cost would be compared to it, because it would have been a lace bark elm in that spot. Uh, he thinks, uh, he's, because the crab apple, uh, was a little bit more abundant, he could find it more easily. So it'd be probably less.
So I took that, that total for Gudenkopf for, um, for the tree cost of the 12,760, because Kim Bonberger was pretty adamant that we should have those specific species or cultivars, I guess, cultivars. So that's why, uh, Gudenkopf would be the 19,999. Now, I know I talked to you about Rotary. Have you, I haven't heard you bring it up yet. It's, you're of the tree in Rotary.
Yeah, I know. I did a little bit of checking, and we kind of, that was a good idea. Wish it would've come up a little bit sooner so we could get on board with that, but...
I mean, if anything, we should plant them by where we have lunch.
Yeah, I know.
That one tree.
Empty cup.
Yeah, empty cup, or close by. I guess there's...
Well, it hasn't gone to the Rotary Board, whether to, uh, finance a tree or not, but...
I still think we should pursue that. And I do think, you know, when we do this, we should have that be our Arbor Day celebration, and I also think that's when we should bring in, uh, Beth Skinner and Sharon Kessinger, and those people that have been waiting Seventh Street, and honor them at the same time.
Yes.
So I think we can make this kind of a big deal when we plant them in August. That's kind of my plan.
Yeah, honestly, I think...
Are you guys okay with planting them in August? That's what the tree board wants because of Boss Nationals.
Well, even like this weekend, and I have younger trees, not young trees, a couple of my trees are like half, three years. I, I, I waited too long. I cut the suckers off them and did all of that. But I watered them. Each tree got almost an hour's worth of water on them because of this heat going on right now. And August can be brutal, and first September can be unpleasant, but unless you wanna wait for spring, but, I mean, I think his schedule, I'm a pro, you water your trees, especially the first three years, water and water and water.
Well, hopefully, I mean, if we, who, if we go with Gudenkopf, we can say, water them whenever your 28 times is to keep them in good shape.
He'll do it. I, I, yeah. Because just the idea that he came ahead and said that.
Yeah.
You know, and he's local.
He's local, which is nice.
Yeah, he'll be right there.
Pretty discussed.
If we have a, if we have a question...
I like that.
Yeah. Or if something, a tree's looking sickly.
You can check, come check it out.
Yeah, right away. He says, and yeah, I'll be up there in about two weeks.
Yeah.
So... So do you guys, I mean, uh, again, watering is the big difference. Um, Prairie Stone is cheaper without the watering, and Gudenkopf is cheaper if we do 28 watering. So there you go.
Yep.
What would you like to do? Would you like to go with Gudenkopf with the 28 waterings at 19,999?
Yes, I, I so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Me.
Me?
Aye.
Aye.
You're opposed. Five, two...
I'm opposed also.
Four, three. You're just, can I just ask a question? You're opposed to the tree, tree project in general?
Uh, yes, I have had no positive feedback from anybody, any constituent that's talked to me. They're all against it.
Okay, and you feel the same way, Diane?
Yes.
And you feel the same way?
Kind of same, I've heard too.
You've had other people tell...
I'm not against the trees. I just, with taxpayer money, and I've lived here for 20 years, and I can remember the last time the trees went in, and it's the same things I'm saying now, and it didn't pan out.
Yeah.
If I thought trees were, you know, something's gonna bring everybody to town, I would, I'd start planting trees myself all over, but I don't think that's necessarily the solution. It can look nice.
People just think that there's a lot better ways we should spend our money than planting trees. They don't, they said Walmart, they don't have trees out there, and they get a lot more people out there shopping than what downtown Marysville does, so they don't. So they don't feel like we need to plant trees downtown to bring people downtown, so...
They do have trees along the south.
Well, but, anyway.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get your comments so that...
But in all good conscience, I can't vote for them because of the people that have contacted me and said that they don't think...
It's all been no?
It's all been no, so...
Did you get anybody say yes? Did anybody say yes to you?
I think maybe two people were maybe in favor of it.
I didn't know anybody's...
I had a phone call from another business person on Main Street, and she said, I'm really glad you're going through with that. And, you know, she said, besides, you know, make it look nice, she kind of was on the same boat I am. It cuts that heat when we have these events, you have the trees, you know, when they get up there, you get under them, you know, it just...
I had a couple who were kind of opposed to it gently, but then, since we did it in a way that made sure everybody got talked to, and nobody got, it wasn't forced onto any business.
Forced trees, yeah.
They kind of liked that. They thought, well, that's, you know, they kind of came around to it because of that. Because nobody was being forced to accept a tree.
Yeah, that was a big deal, too. That was a very good choice not to say, you're gonna have a tree here.
And you're gonna have this tree.
Yeah.
You have no input, yeah.
No.
When you have an event downtown, they set under the awnings. When they have the car shows downtown, you don't want your cars parked under the trees.
I'm talking, I'm not talking, I'm talking to people. We'll put there, they'll set underneath the trees, put shade when it comes. Yeah, the awnings are nice, but we used to have a program one time, didn't we, about having, putting awnings on the buildings?
That was through Main Street.
That was through Main Street, okay.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah.
All right, well, four, three was the vote. We'll proceed. We'll get the old trees ripped out soon, right, Austin? That's a goal, and to plant in August, and have them heavily watered for Boss Nationals. They should be blooming, right? I'm just kidding. Super trees.
Uh, okay, next on the list is Hometown Drive, uh, bid request slash plans. Bid request is pretty much the same as the last street project, uh, bid request that I put together. Change is that, uh, the bid is due, what did I say, June 20th rather than the 6th, because it just gives them enough time, uh, to put the bid together. to put the bid together. Uh, and it might still impact possibly a mobilization fee if, uh, they try for all of these projects and get them. So, uh, you can see the plans in there, and if you have any questions, Tony's here.
Tony, will you come to the podium just for a minute? I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure, the two drainage areas that I saw on the street that were the worst was the one that's, the storm drain is not at the low point of the street on the north side. Are we fixing that?
Um, yes. If you can see, there's four drains now.
So, you're, so the drain is, are you moving it to that low point?
Yeah, I've put one on each side of the low point, essentially.
Okay.
Worked the low point.
So, there, so on both sides of this driveway?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. And then also, by the mailboxes was a really bad area. Was that because of drainage water, too?
By the...
By the mailboxes, you know where all the mailboxes were? Kind of in the middle of the U?
Hmm. That's just where the concrete started breaking up. I think holding water.
Yeah, what that...
I think that's from, yeah, from the concrete settling.
You just think that was from the concrete? It's not a drain, water drainage issue?
Nope.
Okay. So, all the other failures in that street, you believe, are just because of the concrete?
Base underneath of it.
Did you add any storm basins, besides that other one, that one we just talked about?
Yeah, there's four total.
There's four total, and what were there before?
They're in the same area, they're basically on both sides of that low area. Um, coming from the south, it's, we've got decent grade, it's like seven tenths percent, but as you go into that vertical curve, it gets very flat, so we've placed basically basins on each side of that, to eliminate that flat area.
Okay.
Catch the water while it's still at seven tenths percent grade, instead of, as it's getting down to three tenths and two tenths.
Okay. All right. We just don't want to have to redo it again.
Correct.
And like, this street's not very old, it's like twenty years old. How old do you think this street is?
I was guessing eighteen.
Eighteen.
Seventeen or eighteen.
We don't want to replace concrete streets every eighteen years, so...
Nope.
You guys have any questions for Tony? All right, thanks, Tony. So, is there, um, a motion to approve the bid request proposal?
I move to re, approve the bid, uh, request for Hometown Drive.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seven oh. All right.
Uh, third on my list is hiring a part-time or, uh, whatever classification, part-time or seasonal. Uh, and seasonal doesn't just mean these three months, it means just a classification on how we, on how we pay. Um, it's, uh, so basically hiring a, a part-time code enforcer to pick up some of the, uh, things that we would like to get cleaned up, uh, a little bit easier, uh, than we have before. Um, so I'm looking for permission, I guess, to, to pursue this, create a position. Uh, we do have somebody in mind that we've talked to, he's, he hasn't said a yes or a no, um, but he's got building experience, uh, and, and could be utilized in multiple different ways, uh, but mainly as a, uh, an after-hours code enforcer, um, reporting that back to City Hall, and so we can get all that taken care of, uh, so...
Does it matter? I'm, I was trying to look up seasonal versus part-time, is it, the difference is pay, or what is it?
Benefits.
Benefits.
But, but do seasonal get benefits?
No.
Do part-time get benefits?
Well, it's the, what, what are we paying for, Cindy?
Uh, part-time can earn papers, whereas seasonal will never get those number of hours, you can hire them seasonally without paper. Some part-time you can say no, but to get over a thousand hours, you get half due.
So, seasonal is limited to a thousand hours? With that, not to have...
They are not limited to a thousand hours, because it's in their job description that they're seasonal. So, they can go, whereas part-time cannot. Part-time, our handbook, I think, says can earn, uh, holidays and earn vacations.
If they work them.
Is that seasonal?
If, if they're normally scheduled, uh, seasonal does.
If you put them on a day that they're normally scheduled to work, then they can pay the holiday. Just a whole lot more stuff with part-time that seasonal is really a better way to go.
Seasonal is the way you want this person to hire?
I've, I mean, that's the easiest way to do it.
We always had a total problem from April to November, seasonal. I mean, it wasn't months, it wasn't when we needed them.
Okay.
And, and call it a non-paper position.
Okay.
What salary range are you thinking, Austin?
I was thinking thirteen to fourteen dollars an hour.
You know, they'll have to come in and obviously learn our code book, Dave is going to have to train them, but they will have some knowledge.
Well, if we take this away from Dave, then what's Dave going to do then? What he's doing?
Well, he, this is the reason why we want to hire somebody, is because Dave has been piled on, and piled on, and piled on, and, so that's why we've gone this way.
It, it's a way to get it done.
Well, I understand, but, I mean, Dave's been doing a lot of the things, but he should be getting a lot of it caught up, I would think.
And that's why we got the, well, some of it's never end. He's the, he's the quote-unquote landlord of Kester Block. He takes care of a lot of the things when there's complaints down there. Uh, and he does electrical work when, uh, when we have a small job, he does this and he does that. Uh, so it's, uh, the, we were recommended, uh, some of the council said, "Let's hire a part-time guy to get this taken care of." So, that's what I'm bringing forward.
I, I move that, um, we authorize Austin to advertise for a, a seasonal code enforcer.
I'll second that.
Do you want to limit their number of hours, or just use our discretion?
Well, what about what we gave the tone? Was he, you said he was...
We always try to keep him under a thousand hours. I mean, you'll know pretty soon how, when he gets the city cleaned up, we don't need him to be the seasonal.
Right. There's, there's busier times of the year, like, we're, we're, we're getting past the busy time, where, uh, David has already picked up a lot of these people that don't want to take care of their yard.
Well, yeah, he's only done weed, though, for the most part. I mean, we need to start doing all the other stuff.
Right, right.
Not many new senses.
In all fairness, Dave, you know, if it rains, then Dave has to go back to every place we sent a letter, and if the yard is big again, then we call any guys come up.
Right.
So, I mean, there's that, as well as the stuff in the porch in the yard.
Right, right.
So, you, you made a motion, and you seconded?
No, I didn't.
Bobby did. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Uh, I think it's really, this motion's fine, but really, maybe the city needs somebody, when they're hiring somebody, that could actually take Dave's place when Dave's gone. Dave's no kid anymore. If all of a sudden he's gone tomorrow, you got a part-time helper around here, it didn't solve the city's problem. We ought to think about maybe putting somebody on the job that can learn from Dave, and when Dave gets ready to quit, he can fill in Dave's spot, and he'll be trained on the job. And you can always get a part-time person to do it now, but when Dave's gone, can the part-time guy take Dave's job over? That's a good question.
Well, the skill set for Dave is way beyond just code enforcement, though.
Pardon?
Dave's job is more than, I mean, if you're going to hire a new, he has to be a zoning administrator, there's a lot of hats that he wears.
Right, well, that person should learn that now, along with Dave, so he can find out how to do it.
Talking, give Dave an assistant, basically? Give Dave an assistant?
You want a full-time person?
We'd be in it for two men doing the job, and he'd fill, he could fill in for Dave if, Dave decides to go to Bermuda or Cuba, and where, where'd Todd go? Africa.
Other side of the ocean.
Well, I think, I think the seasonal thing is just to get caught up, and then if we want to hire another full-time person, we should build that into the 2019 budget. But right now, in 2018, I think we don't have that position budgeted, so we should stay with a seasonal, where we don't have to pay benefits.
Just finish up this year.
Yeah, for this year. And, and if you want to discuss that further, the 2019 budget thing, I think we should bring that up and discuss it. Fair enough?
That's fine with me, I just wanted to bring it up, when you were, you're making a motion to get somebody in here to be temporary help.
Yeah.
That's not what we need. We need, we need somebody to fill in and take care of business.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about if we need another person for 2019.
Okay.
Okay, if that's out of pride with everybody. Okay, any other discussion? So, all in favor, hire a seasonal person, part-time advertising, thirteen to fourteen dollars an hour? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six one. You are opposed, because you, no, you don't think we need another person?
Not really.
Okay, all right. Um, we're going to do one more thing, and then I saw Cleve just walked in, so we'll give his, um, his proclamation to him. Um, the budget workshop date, what the due dates are?
Uh, budget workshop, I was looking at, uh, June thirteenth and fourteenth, I've already had, uh, Todd Frye say he couldn't make either one of those dates, uh, and then, uh, so those are still available, if a majority want to go the, and then the week after that, but no, I wouldn't recommend going any farther than a week after that.
Well, if we do a week after that, then we're at the twenty-twenty-first one, the first of July, in July, we should be looking at the second revision, revision of the budget.
What day of the week is it?
It's Wednesday, Thursday, thirteenth, fourteenth.
I cannot do any Wednesdays, so...
What about next Monday?
Whatever my preference.
Next Monday, I won't be here. Next week, I'm out. So, the week after is why we, and Monday night, we have a meeting, council meeting. So, we said Tuesday's a break, so we picked Wednesday or Thursday. We, you're going to do it Friday night, huh? Friday night?
No, I work Friday nights, too.
Can everyone else do Wednesday or Thursday?
Can anybody do Tuesdays? I can't.
You want back-to-back meetings, though?
Well, we're going to be doing it...
What names are you talking about?
June thirteenth or June fourteenth?
Gosh, okay.
It's Wednesday and Thursday.
I can do...
What time?
Usually, they start at five-thirty?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen, we do it five fifteen, so people can get off at five o'clock. You guys have a preference? Well, let's make it Thursday, then, then you have a couple days after the...
Thursday.
Thursday?
Fourteenth.
Thursday the fourteenth?
So, you know, um, Chief Actorman's, it's a Rotary event, so what, I'm gone that day, so that's also going to be a conflict for him?
On the fourth?
Because it's for Presidents and President-elect of Rotary.
Is it for training?
It's, yeah, it's with the district governor.
Are you coming back that night?
It'll be later in the night, I don't, it's like, it's in Topeka, it's a seven o'clock event in Topeka, so it kind of shoots the whole night.
Why don't you ask him if, if there's anything that's questionable, that's capital improvement, should be put in the duty eleventh meeting?
His should be, um, a vehicle for next year. Uh, it, it shouldn't be two, yeah.
If there's anything unusual, will you bring it to the council on June eleventh, rather than waiting until the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and if you feel like the chief should be here, ask him to come?
Uh-huh.
Okay, and we're going to interrupt this, because Cleve Walstrom is here, and, um, I have a proclamation, I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to present it to him. So, Cleve, why don't you come stand up? Here, I'll come here, I'll come here. Cleve, what have you been doing the last forty years?
Well, each year, I get a hundred dollars from the council to help put on the Jolly Jogathon. Thank you.
It's well-earned, yeah, yeah. So, the Jolly Jogathon has been going on for forty years, how can you start at this brainchild? Why?
Well, we, we did it to, uh, we were selfish, I guess, we just decided we'd have a track meet, a few of us guys that like to run, so we made our wives time us one meet there, and then, and then we felt guilty after that, so, so we thought we should have one for little kids. So, a week later, we put on a meet for little kids.
Oh, cool.
And then the next, uh, the next year, we combined it, and I believe it's one of the only track meets that covers age brackets, all the way on up for to ninety, ninety-nine, or, I haven't had anybody a hundred yet.
Over a hundred, you've had some in the nineties?
I've had some in the nineties.
Awesome.
Yes.
Awesome.
We've had, uh, a number of Olympians have come here, the first one was Wisdom Low, he was a medical student in Omaha, and he came here, he was a long jumper, he still holds the standing long jump record, it's well over ten feet, and I just spoke to him the other night.
Oh!
There, and he's coached a number of jump state champions in Nebraska, he lives up there, is a biochemist, and, uh, we had Ed Rocksterwin come here, and almost qualified for the Olympic trials, uh, in high school, and we had...
Was that puddles?
He was, he was a high jumper, he did run hurdles.
High jumpers, okay.
He did, he was a state champion in the hurdles.
Okay.
And we had Steve Fritz, a decathlete, who, uh, placed fourth in the Olympics. We had, uh, a couple of years ago, Mason Finley, who was a national record holder in the discus, and, uh, he came here and hit, hit the fence.
Awesome.
Way up there.
How'd you measure that?
Yeah, yeah. We, we, it's, uh, there, needed a big field. But anyway, those are some of the people that have come.
Well, I've just helped the last few, few years, and I had no idea what went on down there, and I walked down to this Homer Hainsman Stadium, it was just packed full of families, kids were running, whole families were running, it was really nice. And from far away, a lot of people travel to do this, and they said this is an annual family event, so, thank you for putting it on all these years. We have a plaque, I'll give it to you the night, or the day, it's this Sunday, so, starting at...
It starts at noon.
At noon.
And that's field events, and then running events start around three.
Okay, so I will give you the plaque, but I'll read the proclamation to you, you can cover it.
Okay.
It says, "Whereas Cleve Walstrom has dedicated forty years of service coordinating the Jolly Jogathon event in the city of Marysville, and whereas Cleve has participated, coordinated, and led hundreds of volunteers, and drawn thousands of participants to the event from within the community and surrounding areas, and whereas this annual event leaves a legacy of generations fit and healthy, and has made a positive impact over several decades, and now therefore, I, Carla Grant, Mayor of Marysville, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June third, twenty eighteen, as Cleve Walstrom Day, in honor of his dedicated service and participation in the annual Jolly Jogathon event, and are all citizens to join in this recognition."
Wow.
So, congratulations. And here's your, 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 your name, it's Marysville.
All right, cool. And thanks to your office staff, and helping track them all, the statistics, Cindy, and the, and the girls around her, they've, uh, been tremendous, too.
Keeping stats?
They keep all the...
All the numbers.
All the numbers, keep it updated, and, yeah, you know, great help.
And thank you, and thank you, Moni, beside him every step, right?
Yeah, she collects all those stats.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you for coming, and we'll give you a plaque on set.
It's awesome, that's your contribution, forty years of it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cleve. And Moni.
And Moni. Alright, so we have a budget workshop. So at the budget workshop, it's gonna be our first twenty nineteen budget, all the capital expenditures, anticipated, those pages, and then, we have five-year plans for departments to look at as well?
Capital improvement, usually, that's what it is.
Capital improvement. So all that will come at once?
Yes.
Okay, great. And have we had any luck finding seasonal staffing in some of the departments?
Street, recently interviewed a couple. Other than that, it's, it's slim pickings.
Okay.
And, I mean, Parks has, has got their normal, normal ones, yeah.
They have seasonal?
Yeah, they have seasonal.
Okay, alright, so we will move on. Oh, do you have anything, Debbie?
I don't, I just got back from the international conference in Virginia. I haven't had time to write anything up or, or get a report ready, but it was a, it was a good, great conference, and glad to be on, but it was a good time.
Cool. Alrighty, so for standing committees, I noticed that the dump is now open, just wanna announce that for seven days a week now. And I noticed that they're doing a lot of chip and seal prep work. Do you know when you're gonna start that?
They have six blocks left of crack sealing, so they'll plan out weather, weather-related schedule.
So are you thinking like next week, or the week after?
I doubt it, because it depends on how these six blocks go in their crack sealing. Sometimes it, they go half a block a day, sometimes they'll go two blocks a day, so it's just, and getting everything together and sewing up some of the other projects, and then we'll have a, have a schedule.
In a couple weeks, maybe, or you'll present when they plan to do it, next meeting?
At least, I mean, we'll have notice if not, because they'll, the residents themselves will actually get notices on their door when it's gonna happen. So that's their notice, or at their door, not necessarily on their door. But they'll get that, and will at least have. If it's in between council, council, we'll put it in the highlights or something like that, notify everybody.
When it's gonna start?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else have street? On water and sewer, they sent out notices for the CIPP when they're cleaning these? Somebody said they got a notice on their door?
Yes, yes.
They had to cover their toilets because?
There's a chance that when they're cleaning out the stool, cleaning out the sewers, that some, some stuff could come up through your toilet because of the pressure. So that, I mean, that's what the notice is telling.
So have they always put those notices around? I just didn't know that?
Yep.
Okay.
They're required to.
Okay, anybody else have anything for water and wastewater? Okay, Parks and Rec, I, so I'm sitting here trying to figure out how to handle some of these events that we have for profit. So we, the nonprofit ones, like the swim team, I don't mind them using the city park or any other, or anything that's sponsored by the city of Marysville, but we have some for-profit events that go on, like the tennis camp is a for-profit. We have, at that, when that Impulse Archery, so they were using the city park for that tag, that's a for-profit enterprise. And then if we have disc golf and have those tournaments down there, that would be a for-profit as well. So I'm trying to figure out if we need to have, like, some kind of policy written stating who's liable for it, have a contract with these people when they have events in city park? Because otherwise, you know, you can set up, somebody could just set up a table and start having a garage sale down there for profit at any whim. I mean, we let these other people use portions of park for profit. How do you guys feel about that? I just think we have to have some type of contract with people that are using the city park for profit from a liability standpoint.
What about the flea market?
Well, that's a city-sponsored event. That's a city-sponsored event?
Yeah.
So that one, it would be something other than that?
Other than the city.
The ones that just come to mind, like.
Are they notifying us before they do that, or they're just?
Well, I don't think, like.
Permission before they do it?
Like, Mary's held that tennis camp for years, and we've never had a contract.
But how do you, how do you stop?
Does she contribute anything to the city?
No.
For the use?
No. But how do you, how do you stop them from using the courts? That's, I mean.
Does she close off all the courts?
Well, she occupies them. I mean, that's, I don't think she goes up and bits a barricade and says, "These are ours," but.
But she has her students on.
Has their people out there, playing on it.
So nobody else can play.
But even like when Impulse Archery was talking, that they said that they go down to that practice field area and they have tag, archery tag.
They were gonna do that for a birthday party, right?
For a birthday party. So they are down there using that area of the park for profit. How do you feel about that, Craig? I mean, for the nonprofits, it's, you know, like, the swim team, that's a city-sponsored event. All the pool parties are cities. But when it's for profit, I mean, if you don't have any type of contract or something, it seems like, what would limit somebody to come and just put an RV down there and start selling stuff out of the RV?
Right, I think it's an interesting question. Yeah, perhaps there's a distinction, a legal distinction that the city needs to maybe put together, maybe some sort of permit policy. I, but I don't know that, I'm not, I don't know that that's necessary or required.
Well, I was kinda, when they told me about the Impulse Archery, I was kinda like, wow, they're shooting arrows down at city park.
Whether it's for profit or not.
But they are, I should say, they were. Were you surprised to hear they were doing that down?
Yeah, a little bit.
I didn't know they were doing it down there. But then you kinda, and you might as well just roll forward and say, if we have this disc golf thing, if they have a tournament, how does that come into play? You know, taking over that specific area of the park?
But there's no requirement for anybody to reserve, has to reserve any portion of the park?
They never have, but they've reserved shelter areas before.
Just shelter areas?
Yeah.
That's not what we're talking about.
But that's not a for-profit enterprise, either.
No, but tennis lessons are. And that's reserved park.
Swimming lessons, I would be in the pool, though. There are pool, and there are lifeguards.
Maybe not. I mean, you could go down and teach swimming lessons in our pool.
Pay the entry fee.
But you don't take the whole pool. Anyway, I just thought we should at least start talking about it. I, you know, my concerns are whether we should have some kind of liability thing written in there, whether we should, if we allow it, to specify when and where and how.
My first thought is that it's not something we want to encourage.
A permit? Have a permit for these?
Or a contract.
Well, whatever, I mean, whatever it would include with the permit, then would come the stipulations with it, but then they would pay forty dollars.
Just, well, probably a nominal fee to pay for us to have the contract and.
Well, like, if you're gonna have a pool party, I mean, if you're gonna have a pool party, then you have to rent it.
You rent the pool, yeah.
Yeah, just like.
But that's not a for-profit event, is it?
Well, some are fundraisers.
Oh. Well, so if they're gonna have the archery thing, then they would rent the, rent the park, if they're gonna have an archery event, maybe? I don't know. Can you do that? I don't know.
And see, I wasn't worried about that, I wasn't worried about the school using it, because that's a not, again, it's kind of a nonprofit thing. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I'll look into it. I don't know if the distinction between for-profit, not-for-profit.
Nonprofit comes into play?
You know, makes a difference from a liability standpoint, the city just generally protecting itself from any activity in the park. But that's a, maybe a Pandora's box. Everybody gets assigned a waiver that uses a park.
Yeah, well, this is more of an organized event, though.
Right, right, where they're occupying space as a group en masse. I mean, I, yeah, if there's some clear distinction that could be drawn in a policy. I'll look into see, you know, if other cities are, you know, have some sort of policy in place that maybe have more of those activities in their parks.
Okay.
And if they draw distinctions.
Yeah, I don't even know about Chicago Park, if they've paid, how they said their tournaments either, or so. Or that Warner Park, I don't know how they do that.
Or neither.
So, anyway, that was just my, trying to figure out if we need to have a policy for something like that. So you'll investigate?
Yes.
Okay, and the other thing is a pro-track and tennis, you didn't talk to him, did you? Have you tried to contact him about looking at the courts again?
No, not yet. We were gonna set up a meeting.
Okay, and Cleve is gone. I was thinking about, we should get a shirt for Cleve that says, "King of Jolly." Don't you think that's funny?
He'd wear it proudly.
I mean, don't you think that sounds cool? King of Jolly?
King of Jolly.
What do you guys think? And then on the back, we'd say, "Forty years of fun," or something, yeah. Of Jolly, forty years of Jolly, or something. You guys okay getting a shirt like that? Okay, can we order a shirt like that? King of Jolly, I thought that was, King Cleve of Jolly.
Cleve.
Okay, I thought, well, and last thing is the freezer that broke, I was just a little concerned that it wasn't very old. Do we have a warranty on it?
We.
How old's the pool? Three years?
I checked that warranty, it was my understanding.
Four years.
Old pool, I did not realize, I knew the fancy glass one broke already right away, and we didn't use it last year, and I realized that this second one was bought at the same time.
So we had one breakdown that was only one-year-old, and now we had one that broke down that was four-years-old? Yes?
Yeah, and we didn't know that there could be a possibility of warranty, because it was, like she said, we thought it was from the old pool. And now, right before we left work, we found that it was relatively new, about four-years-old.
Well, freezer should last more than four years.
Yeah. There is a thought process that, because we unplug it and plug it back in, and unplug it and plug it back in, or only operate it, only operate it for a season, and then just leave it sit, that that, not that we are experts in that, that it might be negatively affecting that, not sure.
Well, did you find out about the new one? Did you tell them we do this, and if there's anything we should know?
I did tell him what we did with it, and now he did, he does have a ten-year warranty on it.
Okay.
How much is the warranty?
Ten-year.
The rest of the work, it just, we just stick hold, that it wasn't up right, I bought it.
How much was the freezer?
Four hundred fifty-nine.
Oh, anyway.
A chest freezer.
You need that door open, and it's all the pool there that go out.
But the other one wasn't under warranty?
We're gonna look into that.
We'll look into that.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I guess we might as well talk about pool staff. So I went down there today, I did a morning swim, the pool was beautiful, and Claire was there, and she was saying that five of her fifteen guards are, five, yeah, five of her fifteen guards are fifteen. And she said that they can't work past nine o'clock. And she, so they can't work pool parties. So, so there was another girl swimming there, and we said, maybe we should contact other pools to see if they have excess lifeguards.
Yeah, and we did, we've already done that.
You've done that?
Yeah, and actually, we've gotten quite a few because of that.
So, but we still don't, but we.
Yeah.
So do we have enough to keep the pool open from one to eight and have pool parties?
We haven't worked out that schedule yet, because they just, I don't know how many, she just signed up this, these last couple days.
Okay, well, I just think that, you know, I hate to, and we might as well have that discussion about, you know, they say that they, we're gonna have to close, or you said we'd have to close August twelfth, based on how we, we're going now.
Yeah.
So, it also said in that, in that Kansas Journal, that they can't work the top of the slide, fifteen-year-olds?
Good.
Okay, so.
But our concession stand workers can. They don't have to be lifeguards.
Oh, so they're rotating up there on a shift?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, I don't, you know, I don't think we should give up pool parties, because I think a lot of people use them for pool parties.
I think they're a profit center, aren't they?
They're kinda, but what's more important, because from these last few years, we've had, with most complaining we've got was because we didn't have them, have the pool open enough. So I guess the decision is, what's more important, having a pool party for twenty individuals, or leaving it open to the public, and.
I thought that pool parties usually were like hundreds of people.
Well, I thought they were all after hours, too.
They're, yeah, and that's the, that's the problem.
Well, eight to ten, but see, we can't do, our, our guards can't go to ten.
Right.
Except the ones over fifteen.
And they have to, they're limited to forty hours a week, right?
Right, well, yeah, they're fifteen-year-olds, yeah.
Fifteen, so we have a third of our staff that's limited to forty hours a week. And some days, we're open nine hours a day.
And like I said, we may not have to, we could probably start taking on more pool parties now that we got these more staff. We haven't worked out that schedule yet. So before we got these new staff members, yes, we were, we were hesitant to take any more pool parties on, and August twelfth was it. But we haven't worked out a new schedule.
So you're confident we have the staff we need?
I'm hoping we do, because, well, we work around.
It would be today that she was done hiring.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, we're gonna work out a schedule and see where we're at.
Okay.
Are these parties for profit?
Well, they make a little profit.
They make, they make some.
Oh, you mean, is it a fundraiser party?
Isn't it a profit-making thing by the city?
It's usually, well, it pays for the guard, and, and it pays for the staff to keep it open.
Then it's not a pro-profit?
Not really.
Because they can't clean, and they can't do all the things they have to do, and have to do that later again, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, I think the pool parties are a positive thing in our community.
Yes, to be able to do.
Yeah, and I don't think we wanna give those up.
No.
And the pool is only open for ten weeks a year. Is that right? Yeah, ten weeks, or maybe twelve. So if we can have pool parties, I think we need to, I need, and if we need to get more staff, do we need to advertise, keep advertising the paper?
Well, I think we've advertised, I mean, like I said before, we advertise in the paper, we also advertise at the school itself, going, hey, we need guards. We've called around to, and recently, we've called around to different pools that said they were, finding out that they were overstaffed, and seeing if they wanted more hours, and that's come to fruition, to our benefit, that people wanna come and work our pool. So I think we can, we can work out the schedule. I'm hoping we can do more pool parties, we already have some on the schedule to do, so it's.
Yeah, well, I just, I just wanna make sure that we have enough staff there, because, you know, Claire was alluding to that they didn't have enough, and she was concerned, and that's when I said, well, have City Hall help you.
No, and we're helping, she knows that we're here to help, and we've offered, and we are going to help her out. And I've already had a conversation with her about how we can go forward, and we're going to talk about it.
Make it work?
Make it work.
Do it all?
Yeah.
Let everybody swim?
We're gonna make it work.
Okay, alright. Anybody else for Parks and Rec? Cemetery and Airport, I would like to say the cemetery, it looked very nice on Memorial Day, and Ron Gar does an amazing job at the service, and thank you for all our veterans.
And Carla did an awesome job, too.
Thank you, I do the opening, yes. Thank you very much. And Diane put all the paintings out, on the crosses.
Poppies.
Poppies.
And so did Carla, she helped me out.
But the cemetery looked great, so thank you, staff. Place and Fire, anybody got anything? Admin and Finance?
Yes, our committee met on May eighteenth and to discuss prohibited fireworks, and that was Diane, Terry, myself, plus Dave Richardson, fire chief, Austin and the mayor were there. The city code of Marysville incorporates the International Fire Code. I think that also affects, say, the rates we pay for our homeowner's insurance, it doesn't?
Well, that's what David said, a lot of what affects it. He went through that at that meeting, it was the pumpers, it was the type of equipment, that's the main thing that affects the insurance rates. And he does not remember when the, when the ISO came through, them ever bringing up the International Fire Code.
Oh, he doesn't?
No.
But I have heard that adopting it and employing the codes does affect it. We'll have to check with insurance people. Anyway, the Marysville City Code, Chapter Seven, Article Three, fireworks, does not provide any information on prohibited fireworks, which are addressed in that International Code, such as bottle rockets, skyrockets, and skylanterns. So our committee proposed that Ordinance eighteen sixty-two would list the prohibited fireworks in our, in our city code book, and I would move that Ordinance eighteen sixty-two be adopted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
In the discussion, just so you know, this, I wanna point out that in the meeting, we, you know, these were prohibited to use or discharged, but we added to sell. So this is specifying something above and beyond what's currently in our code. And I just want to make sure you read how we wrote that.
And, and Dave would and does, he does, to the firework stands, he does give out information. So, this is, this could be included.
But Dave was in, in, supported this as we talked about it in the meeting.
Yeah, because they don't, he doesn't sell them.
Yeah. So, just to clarify, that they can sell them and they can discharge them and they just list them out. And, oh, and also at the meeting, we had other cities that did this, had adopted the International Fire Code and specified, specified prohibited fireworks to clarify, so...
He did have a concern if, with adopting this, sell late in the year as it relates to fireworks stands. And the only one that would really be affected because one and two are statewide already. But some of our firework stand might have already purchased skylanterns for sale because it was not illegal to sell in the city of Marysville last year. So, they, as David already said, he's, they, he's purchased all his stock already. So...
I don't think he said he had any, though.
He didn't mention that, but...
He might, but other people might.
But other people buy it. So, to take that into consideration when, how you're going to pass this.
If they don't use, if they don't sell them, they have to pay a restocking fee to their wholesaler?
I would only...
They're actually not returnable.
Yeah.
Oh, really? No, a friend of mine in college's family ran a fireworks warehouse out of Alatha and they don't return because they don't know how they were stored.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, that's why they'd end up with stuff that they couldn't get rid of. They'd get them back, but they wouldn't give them anything for it. And so, we'd fire them off, that's why.
You can take this to another county and just fire them off.
Right. So, yeah, that was the only concern with this. Otherwise, it was completely fine with them.
Have you heard anything from the other places that set up stands in regards to this at all? Because there's, what, three? There are more than three, four?
At least three.
Very four, yeah.
I think last year, only three, maybe.
I think three last year.
But they were illegal last year, too.
Not to sell.
Not to sell, but to fire, yeah. Discharge, I guess. Okay, well, we have a first...
Is, I mean, would this going to affect immediately on publication or after the, is there a protest period or anything?
It says, no.
As passed.
After its publication, yeah.
We can provide a copy when they come get their permits for their fireworks stand.
I'm okay with the ordinance. I, that does concern me a little that they might have laid out money on something. Now, we, they thought they could sell and then the rules changed while they were waiting for it to be delivered, but...
Okay. Roll call?
Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
No.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
No.
Stroller?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
5-2. All right. The only other thing I have on finance and admin, I, the FEMA guy, there's a FEMA guy that Dave Richardson's been talking to, so I called him and he called me back, which I was so excited to talk to him about these lots. And he basically said that the entire United States, that he only is aware of one time that they took that deed off a FEMA lot. And that had to do in Augusta, Kansas, when it had a big K-DOT project and affected all these tens of thousands of people and drivers. Somehow, they got it approved through FEMA. But he said, no one else in all the country has been able to take a FEMA lot off, off a deed. And they said, the reason is that the National Flood Insurance paid those monies out. And that was a way to make sure that they don't have to repay on a specific property. And they said it would take an act of God to get it changed. I know, so we're...
That's awful.
And then I spoke to him briefly about my exercise lots. And he said, you know, we would have, it would have to be gravel and it would have to be like a wooden platform so the water can get through. It has to be a permanent...
Can you put concrete down?
You can't put concrete down. You can't put a fence up. There's all these limitations, but, you know, I told him, I said, can I call Jerry and Randy? He goes, well, you can call Jerry and Randy, but the first call is to me. And I tell him that it's not gonna happen, so... But at least he returned my call, explained their thinking. He said, I said something, well, can we buy that deed right off? And he said, no, you already own the property. And I was like, I know.
They control it. They, they control it, we own it.
We own it, yeah.
It's too bad, that circumstances such as now we have the dog.
I told him that. It's not gonna flood.
Could change.
And I told him, and he, he was familiar with Dane Bailey, who did our re-mapping of our zone, our flood plain. So, he was well aware of, that had just been updated and it just doesn't affect it. So, that's my FEMA lot discussion. Jason, procedures for, but I was just grateful to have him, a real person to talk to.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. That's progress, even though it was a wrong answer. Okay. Anybody else have admin and finance? We will move along to the swimming pool staff. It's on page 43. Oh, but there's a slight revision, so it's on your desk. One was just written incorrectly, right? Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the swimming pool wages as amended.
I'll make a motion that we approve the swimming pool wages as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you have any other, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right. And on the back page, on page 44, we approved the starting salary across the board and we hired Joe, and he's at the lower rate, by 37 cents an hour. So, it would raise his salary from 1509 to 1546. That would be the only change. So, I would entertain a motion to increase his pay scale to by 1546.
Move to agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right. I think that's everything on my notes.
For clarification, that's the next pay period or retroactive or what are we doing?
Probably retroactive. Are you guys okay with retroactive starting date?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks for clarification. Have we already made, paid them once?
I think so.
Yes, we have.
Will that be a...
No, it'll be fine. Oh, we'll make it work.
Okay. All right. City Attorney, you have anything?
I do not.
Is there any reason for an executive?
Uh, yeah.
You have a reason for an executive?
I do. I make, I would like to make a motion that we recess an executive session pursuant to non-elected personnel exception KSA 75-4319. Be willing to discuss employee performance matters. They have basically non-elected personnel. And it should include the governing body and the attorney.
City Attorney, governing body and City Attorney? 9:38 and how long?
10 minutes.
To 9:48, returning 9:48? Or maybe we'd say 9:50. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 9:50. Calling the regular session, but no binding decisions. We're taking the executive session and we're continuing with the regular session of the City Council.
No, it's not.
All right. For roundtable discussion, we have a big weekend ahead of us, Big Blue BBQ. So, we hope everybody is in attendance and spends a lot of time downtown like Joe wants. Should be a good time to be in Marysville, Kansas. Darlene?
In, following that lead.
Oh, wait a second. Can I say this real quick? This code book that's laying on your desk, we do, in our code book, we don't have a code of procedure adopted. And so, this is the one that the league put out. So, I want you guys to read it for the next meeting. And if you have any problems with it or changes you want to make, please let me know and then we will try to adopt a code of procedure for the next meeting. All right? I'm sorry, Darlene.
Okay. We got a lot of publicity in the...
Oh, yeah.
The peak of the year.
Ooh. Is that the Charlton Poké Ball?
Uh, yes, yes, they got a lot of publicity. But anyway, it mentioned the three-day event. I'll pass that on around.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Anything else?
No.
Bobby?
I'm good.
Gina?
I just had a few complaints that the pool was dirty, that there was a lot of stuff floating around in the bottom of the pool. We had to be, we happened to be at the pool and this woman was swimming laps. And we were talking about putting goggles on our son because his eyes get burnt all the time. And she said, yeah, but you don't want to put them on because when you're doing laps, looking down here, she said, you don't want to see what's at the bottom of the pool.
Okay.
That's all.
That's just one, you only heard it from one person?
And there was another lady that was standing next to her and she said, yeah, it was really dirty. So, it was just two ladies that were standing there that were swimming laps in the pool on Saturday.
So, you checked with Claire?
I, I... Well, I've heard some up before, so I, I checked with, I went down and talked to Claire and Stephanie at the same time. And they assure me they're cleaning it every day, cleaning it every morning. They put the automatic cleaner in there when they can. They can't have it in there when there's people in the pool, so that's a challenge. But no, they are going to keep working at it, yes.
Couple dozen grass carp will take care of that problem.
The one day I was there swimming, I didn't notice that, so...
Well, it was Saturday, too. And you know, it was the second day of it being open and all that stuff.
Do you know the day it opened, that Saturday? Did it open Saturday or Friday? Saturday. That was mass humanity. I drove by.
We were there Saturday.
Mass humanity. Like every square foot had a body in it and I was like...
Saturday was ultimate, so...
Anything else? Thanks, Gina. Terry?
Uh, not tonight.
Todd?
Something brought up at the beginning of the meeting, Joe cohorts, cohorts about outdoor seating, you know, possibilities. It's something I've kind of thought about before and I know it's the kind of thing,[1713.64]